It feels like tonight's attendance is about 25% higher than normal at 4:59. Would that be a correct percentage calculation?
Might be.
As you, Steve, you're a big draw, Steve.
I'm just happy to be here. I saw right as I said that Elise went right to the sharing of the screen. That right down.
He reminded me it was 4:59.
Keep the bank out on Alpine Parkway, looks beautiful as always.
Thank you very much, Jeff. We're believers in robust deployment of holiday or seasonal lighting. So we enjoy to continue that tradition.
I figure it's always a competition between you and Miller Denel across the street there, too.
I like to think of that as a collaboration as compared to a competition.
All right, I think I have five o'clock. Are we ready?
Yeah.
We are.
All right, so today is Monday, December 7th. This is a village boarding for the Village of Oregon, Wisconsin. I would ask for a roll call, please.
Peterson?
Here.
Luke Stitch? Horton?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Randy Glish?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Bolick?
Bolick is here.
Okay, and do we have Luke yet?
I just added him, Peggy.
Okay.
Just doing this.
Oh, here comes Luke.
Thank you.
All right. Luke, we just took a roll call. All right, so now we're at the point in our agenda for community input. So this part of the agenda allows anyone from the public who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda to bring that to our attention. We aren't allowed to take action, but we can always put something on a future agenda. So is there anyone watching or at the meeting that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda tonight? I don't see anyone waving their hands. All right. Sounds good. Then we will continue on to item four under public appearances. Item A is a presentation by President and CEO Steve Piattar of One Community Bank. Apparently, he's officially making a donation from the new library building. So that's exciting. Jennifer, do you want to introduce him or how's this work?
Well, I think, Jean, you kind of just did, but we have Steve Piattar, who's the President and CEO of One Community Bank in our Oregon location. And we also have some of his team members present. Liz and Heather are also here tonight. OCB has been a huge supporter of our campaign since day one. Steve and his wife Kelly have graciously reviewed the, our, two of our honorary campaign chairs and have really been helpful throughout the campaign. The Oregon Community Bank, as you know, under that name matched all the donations at a special campaign kickoff event we had back in February, which seems like a lifetime ago at this point, but it was a really great community event, got a lot of excitement about the library. And OCB has supported pretty much every campaign event we've done, not just with financial contributions, but also by showing up and spreading the word and just in every every way possible. So we are just grateful for their continued support and thrilled to have them here tonight to announce their gift to the campaign for all of you to hear. So I will turn it over to Steve. I don't want to steal his thunder, so.
So Jennifer, thank you for that wonderful introduction and those kind comments.
Okay.
President Carpenter and the rest of the board, thanks for letting us just have this moment to express, to do our donation and express our appreciation for everything that the village does for One Community Bank. So as Jean said, I'm Steve Piattar, President and CEO of One Community Bank. The last time I was here with a big check photo, I was Steve Piattar of Oregon Community Bank. And as you know, over the past year, our operation Oregon Community Bank and McFarland State Bank have merged to create One Community Bank. Here in Oregon, we're One Community Bank Oregon and McFarland, we're One Community Bank McFarland. While our name has evolved slightly, what remains the same is our commitment to the communities we're in and our commitment of financial resources to invest in wonderful projects that are good for the community. So tonight, we're excited to announce that we will be donating $100,000 to the Oregon Library Campaign. So we're very excited about that. This, oh, look at that, the photo pops up. Well done. So that was taken earlier today on the site of the new library, where the new library will be constructed. This donation for us as One Community Bank matches the other size, the other largest donation we've made as an organization, which was also that $100,000 donation to support the J.C. Park redevelopment. So as some things change, other things remain consistent, and our commitment to supporting the community remains at One Community Bank.
That is spectacular. Yes, if we were to do this in person, yeah, we can clap. Look at all those muted claps. Yay.
I don't know, how much money, how much do you make a year, Mac? Eighty-five.
Hey, so if you aren't currently on the agenda, if you could mute yourself, because we can hear your conversations and they sound a little personal. So if you want to go and hit the mute button on your Zoom, that'd be great. So Steve, I just want to thank you on behalf of the village for your commitment to to projects that we are trying to make the community better, more inclusive for all. And it's, I'm glad that you're picking the projects that are definitely doing that. They're creating opportunities for everyone. The library for people that, to educate themselves, to open their minds, and then J.C. Park West to exercise and get fresh air for everyone. So we appreciate that.
It is our pleasure, President Carpenter, and I should probably make a quick comment that I don't think we were quite able to edit this image, because after we took this picture, I may have gotten a message from someone inside the village that suggested that we were very close to a milestone amount from a donation standpoint. So I think we're just about to increase this dollar amount slightly. I don't know if Jennifer wants to mention that, or if Trustee Glish wants to mention kind of a little bit extra we might want to throw in.
So I'll just say, I knew we were close to what Jennifer is going to announce to us. And so I just shot Steve an email saying, hey, we're kind of close here. We're almost there. So I'll leave it to Jennifer to make the announcement.
Jennifer, do you want to announce the milestone that we've hit for fundraising?
Yes, and I apologize, like, the only time I've had technical difficulties in the last nine months happens to be when Steve is announcing his gift. So I am so disappointed I missed that. I just got back on and I believe Steve was.
It was great, Jen. Jennifer, he put on like a gorilla suit. It was pretty cool.
Yeah. So I'm thrilled to announce that with OCB's contribution today, they will put us over the $2 million mark, which is absolutely amazing for a community of our size. The Want to Key Public Library, for example, raised 1.7 as part of their campaign. So we've surpassed what they've been able to do, which is just absolutely amazing. And just want to again, thank you, Steve, his team at OCB and all the community members who have backed this project. It's just been amazing to see your support. So thank you, OCB, for investing in our community.
Jean, can I just say a couple? So you know, I've had the pleasure of working with Steve ever since we started the pump house. And I just want to say every time, you know, I go to Steve and ask, and he always, the bank always sort of comes through. And I think it's even telling, even in these sort of difficult times that we're having with the pandemic, and they stood by us and didn't reduce their amount. They're still giving us $100,000 or a little bit over that. So, so Steve, I just want to thank you, and you know, it's been a pleasure for me and all these, the years I've been here and all the projects. So we can always count on you, and so thank you for that.
Trustee Glish, I greatly appreciate those kind words. Know that our commitment to the community continues. So I have all the confidence in the world that should there be other projects in the community that you think One Community Bank might be a good fit for, I'm confident you will tell me about those opportunities.
I bet I will.
And I will look forward to those.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you so much, Steve. We appreciate your time tonight and the contribution.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, I think at this time, we are going to move up an item, Agenda 4D.
Please, yep.
Yep, and so Item 4D is a continuing discussion with the elders, and this is regarding the analysis of Lake Stone's tax increment finance, their TIF request for Janesville Street affordable housing project and possible board action. So let's see, let me get my screen back here.
I saw Frank is on the call.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just saw him.
So welcome, Frank. Thanks again for being here tonight. Do you want to take it from here?
I go.
Oh, there he is.
Sorry about the connection there. So we have analyzed the Lake Stone project. It's a light tax, so it's a low-income housing tax credit project, which by its nature, the rents are restricted by WIDA according to various income levels that this project will serve. And this is according, it's supposed to be for a 50% to 75% of the area median income. So some of the residents are going to be earning half of what the general community does earn. So obviously, with the rents being restricted to those levels, the property valuation isn't as high as what a normal market rate project would produce. So in order to provide assistance to the developer for their application to WIDA for their tax credits, they have to have a certain slug from the community in order to make their budget work and make the economics of this work. Without getting into too much of the prior detail, we examined several different scenarios where that might occur, and it does not, did not, did not satisfy that threshold level in either of those scenarios. So we took another look at it, and what this came down to was being able to extend the termination date of the current tax increment district in order to provide several more years of available cash flow for this project. So in that respect, we looked at, sorry, let me click over to my schedule here. Currently, this is expect, oh, thank you. Currently, this is expected to expire in 2036. So we, at that level, the project is not, is not able to be supported from the current termination date. So we looked at two different things. There's, there was a decrease in the tax rate for the tech colleges several years ago. The DOR recognized that because of that reduction, that some of these tax increment districts were going to be hurt or penalized in doing so. So they allowed a, they allow a three-year extension for those in order to help compensate for that reduction in the tax rate, about 90 cents, I think, on the, at that time that they reduced that. Also, in, for the affordable housing statutes, there's a, available to extend a tax district by one year once the other obligations of the TID are satisfied. In that one year, at least 75% of that additional year's revenue is supposed to go to support affordable housing initiatives within the community. It doesn't have to stay within the TID, but it does have to stay within the community. So we looked at that as well. So in effect, we had a three-year extension due to the tech college, and then we had a one-year extension for the affordable housing provision. In that, however, in that respect, the total tax increment available for this would not meet the gap that we've identified for this project. So we, we also then looked at a six-year extension, and that includes, as you can see in the memo in front of us, the three years for the tech college, and then there's also a three-year possible standard extension. The standard extension is basically for the, if the, if the district is not able to satisfy all those obligations within the period, there's a three-year extension on that. So we've layered in the two extensions onto this. And if you want to go back to the cash flow you just had up there, you can see now at the end in 2040. Sorry, can you go a little bit farther down? So you'll see there that the, there's still a gap of $163,000 if we just did a the three-year plus the one-year affordable housing extension. So that's represented 163,000 in negative in parentheses down there on the bottom left for differential. So if we want to go to the next, the next slide for the six-year extension, there we go through 2042. At the bottom is this 2,775,000 is the gap that the developer has. We are, I'm sorry, 2,755. By doing the two, three-year extensions, we're able to get to 2,775. So we just covered that by almost $20,000. So it will take all the increment that we're able to provide, less the district's administrative costs for the six-year extension in order to provide that assistance to fulfill the obligations of the village and to allow the developer to apply for their tax credits and hereby showing the, I would say certainty, but the likelihood that those tax credits, those tax increments will provide the piece they need for their application. So in that respect, I think you'll be looking at requests to have those, those two extensions discussed tonight and approved. So that's, that's just really the quick numerical background for what that request will be. And I'm not sure, Mike, if you've got anything further on that that you need me to elaborate on, but that's.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Frank. I was going to just tell the board that even if we were not doing the Lake Stone project, I think elders would agree, or Frank would agree that it makes sense to do, to try to do this extension, because this TID is underwater, and the longer we can keep it open and projects could happen, we could, we could actually get it into a positive cash flow. My recommendation to the board tonight is that we ask elders to give us a proposal to do the six-years extension, the tech college and the three-year standard extension. And I would bring that to the board to the next meeting.
Yes, go ahead, Jerry. Jerry, you're still on mute, though.
That should do it. I guess I have a couple of questions. If Frank wants to answer, probably Mike. Mike, this will still satisfy the but-for provision of TIF lending, right?
Yes, yep. Correct.
Okay, and what that is, is but for the use of this TIF money, this project wouldn't happen. That's correct, right, Mike?
That is correct, yep.
Okay. Does extending it this amount subject the taxpayers of the village to any additional risk?
Mike, if you want me to jump on that.
Yeah, go ahead, Frank. I can't think of any. Go ahead, yeah.
No, we, this is structured as a pay-as-you-go project or a support. So the developer has to produce the value. They have to build the building and produce the value in order to get the reimbursement of the taxes that they're paying on it. There's nothing issued upfront by the village that would put you in an adverse financial position. So really, it shifts the risk to the developer to create the project and to make this, make this happen.
Okay. Thanks, Frank. Jerry, if you're asking it in a general sense, if the TID is extended, you know, regardless of the project, I actually say it benefits our taxpayers, because I think Lisa would agree that, you know, the village has fronted this TID money sometimes on the annual basis to, so it can get through the year. And by leaving the TIF open longer, we may try to collect that, that tax levy back from the TID at the end of the TID. So I think.
Yeah, we may be able to pay ourselves back for the money that we've already levied for this TID district.
Yep.
Very good. That's always a good thing to have. The, so there's no additional risk to the residents. And this is a pay-as-you-go, right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So in other words, we, we take the principles of, of the of Lake Stone, pay their tax amount at the end of the year, we turn around and then pay down the TIF.
We do what's called municipal revenue obligation bond. And then, yeah, we pay them on an annual basis, you know, you know, based on the increment that's being generated, Jerry. That's correct.
Right, so there's, there's no money out of pocket by the residents whatsoever.
The only thing that'll be out of pocket is to do, and this will be a TID expense, it will be to do the extension.
Okay.
But then, but then the project is also generating some administrative fees on an annual basis, which will help, which will help the TID.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, and so I, oh, so I would say, I, so I'm comfortable since I know this has been a top commitment or goal for the village board, you know, to give the 100% of the increment back to Lake Stone, so we can make the project work. I'm comfortable with that. I didn't start off with that, but I think with Frank's analysis, it shows that we have to do that, so I am comfortable doing that. I recommend doing that to the board, sir.
Sounds like a good plan to me. I'd certainly support your request tonight, Mike, to extend this.
Thanks, Jerry. Other, Randy, go ahead.
So, so Mike, I have a question. The last time we had the presentation, and you're going to have to help me, because I don't have the documents. We hold some things, was it like 25%, that 25? So is there any of that in this, Mike?
No, no, I mean, so Elise has done a really good job of preparing what's called a new, a new TIF policy that we're going to present to the planning commission and the board. And on a regular basis, we would like to keep 25% of the increment on projects, just to make the TID's cash flow better.
Right.
But there will be instances where, like this, where when you're doing, trying to do an affordable housing project, well, that would not be possible. So we started with 75, went to 85, and now we're actually giving them, well, the board agrees with this, 100% of it back to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
After administrative costs.
Yeah, yes, yeah, right.
Yeah. And again, I think, Mike, to your point, you know, for a market rate project that would produce a higher value, you know, having a 20 or 25% retainage for the district would be certainly in line with a lot of other communities and good financial planning. It's just that with a, with a tax credit deal and affordable housing project, you're really looking at it less as a financial instrument and more of a public good type of a deal. So again, it's because of the limitations by WIDA, you're not going to be able to produce that kind of value to withhold that, that much retainage. So you would, I think you would, if you carve out a, an exception in your policy or your guidelines, I think you might want to mention that these type of projects need additional support.
That's a good point.
Just so the future boards, board members, you know, are clear on that.
Yeah, good point.
And Jean, just one last, one last point. When we were talking about this project, this is, this is the type of project that we as a board have talked about, that this is a priority for us. Affordable work, you know, workforce housing, affordable housing to the community. So this, this is a perfect fit for what what we have said is a priority for the village board. I just want to make that comment.
Thanks, Randy. Other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Corey.
Either Mike or Frank, can you give us a rough, rough estimate of how much the extension process is going to cost? And is there a possibility to include that in, you know, Lake Stone being at risk at that, rather than the village being at risk for that?
Frank, do you know what it typically costs? No, I don't think.
It's, it's certainly not the cost or the duration of setting up the district initially, but I don't have that number in front of me. I apologize on that. I think the timing is 30 to 30-something days or so to get that done. But the cost on that, I'm really not sure.
Mike?
Yep.
This is Dave.
There's Dave, okay.
So we had sent you a proposal on Friday, I think. And the total cost of doing the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of this is only $5,000. Our normal price for doing a regular creation or amendment would be more like 15. So this is, this has a lot less to it, but it's more like a 30 to, I think Dawn told you 30 to 60 days, I think, when we were on the phone the other day. Doesn't that sound right?
Yep.
Thanks, Dave. And as we've got this model, we've got a $5,000 retainage or a pullback for TID expenses per year anyway, and that escalates by 2%. So you will be able to cover that at some point over the future.
Yeah. So Corey, in response to your question, I think that's how you pay for the TID, the project. I was collecting an annual administrative fee. That's my, my opinion.
Yeah, that was much less than I was expecting it was going to be. And, you know, since this extension was solely really for this project, I was you know, a little bit hesitant with it, but since it's only $5,000 and that can be a TID eligible reimbursement, I'm okay with it.
Except that I go back to one of my comments, we'd be doing this anyways at some point. We've talked about this internally, because this TID is underwater. We would be trying to do this type of extension, no matter what, even without the project, Corey.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Jenna.
And I just wanted to clarify with this extension, making it, I believe it's supposed to close in 32, so 19 years instead of 12 years, right, longer on the TID, we could potentially have, that leads to opportunity to have other projects in the TID in that extending year. It's not just solely extended for this project, correct?
Right. That's the reason why you do it. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, Michael, well, it looks like the board's comfortable with your recommendation. Do you want to go ahead and put that on a future agenda item or?
So, so I was going to ask, I was going to ask the board, so what I would do is I would, I would bring to the 21st meeting, Matt would prepare the TIF agreement with 100% going back to Lake Stone, and then I'll have the elders' proposal for extending it to the, on the next agenda as well.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, I see heads nodding. Excellent.
Good, thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Frank, for your time tonight. We appreciate it.
Certainly. Is there anything further?
No.
I don't think so.
Thank you. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, then, we will go back to Item 4B. This is Discussion of Public Administration Associates Regarding the Village Administrator Search and Possible Board Direction. Do we have somebody from PAA on the call tonight?
I think Kevin, I saw Kevin on before.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yep. Yep.
All right, excellent. Okay, so we have a number of items on the agenda tonight. I'll just go through these. So first of all, we have FYI-only list of possible projects from the village administrator for proposed tax announcement. We have an assessment composite ranking report. We have, we're going to be reviewing the draft position announcement, going over the salary survey reports, discussion using a survey to expand community involvement, finalizing the schedule, and then finalizing the assessment center process. So I'll let you guys kind of walk us through this, however you want, if that sounds okay.
Sure. Mike, should, should I just pick it off or?
Please, please do. I mean, all I was going to say was, I gave the board that list of projects. I just wanted you to know that I provided that to Kevin and Chris to use in the job announcement, so. That's all. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, and just a point on that, we like to include, you know, some, some projects or initiatives that the new administrator would have on his or her plate going forward, and we use it as part of our marketing, and we, and we think it's important that it's a, it's a way of selling the community and the position as well. You know, there's some really good things happening in Oregon, and we want to point that out. So that's why we asked for that information. So if we could go to the assess, the assessment composite report, I think you've got a copy of that, okay? I want to thank the board members as well as the staff for completing this. This is the, this is, this is a composite report that kind of, you know, puts the, puts it all together. And, you know, it's interesting, if you look at the experience in certain village government functions, the staff in the, in the board were, were number one was. the staff in the, in the board were, were number one was capital improvement planning execution. So you were very, um, very much together on on that particular, uh, areas being your, your top priority in terms of experience. You know, some of the other areas you had in common, financial management was the second highest ranked experience area of importance for the, for the board, and it was number three for the staff. Human resources was, was number three for the board, fifth for the staff. Uh, intergovernmental relations was fifth for the, uh, board and second for the staff. And then TIF, uh, TIF financing was actually on both radar screens, you know, it was a, a high priority for both the staff and the, uh, and the board. Um, little deviation, um, the economic development came out as one of your top five for the board. And then, on the other hand, uh, for the, for the staff, organizational change and development, uh, was in the top five. I I guess without, you know, we, 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 we asked this for this assessment because it helps us, uh, it guides us in our recruitment. It also guides us in, in, in how we, um, market and present the position to potential candidates. Was anybody surprised by, by the rankings, or is everybody pretty pleased with how that worked out, you know, so?
Jeanie?
Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
Can I ask Mike or somebody, who, who was on the, uh, the village management team that filled out the survey, just curious?
The, the department heads.
Okay, all of them?
Mm-hmm, correct, yep, yep. And I think, I think I asked Candy to also.
Thank you, just curious.
So again, that really helps us knowing, to know what, what you're looking for. And, you know, for example, TIF is, is something that we're going to really look for experience, you, obviously, that's very important. That was one of your items on tonight's agenda, so that will be something that we will, um, recruit for. You know, we want to hopefully attract, you know, good candidates that have some TIF experience. In, in the personal qualities area, if you want to kind of scroll down a little bit there, um, you know, the board, board and the staff were a little bit different on this, but, you know, a number one thing that the board is looking for is a collaborative style, uh, you know, in carrying out the governing body policies. Um, emotional intelligence came out as number two. Um, being a team builder and and leader and addressing community issues and problems was number three. Uh, number four was innovative, some, somebody who's thinking outside the box that, you know, is willing to, uh, uh, you know, be creative in, in, uh, in bringing things to the board. And then, uh, uh, number five was a history of stable tenures in previous positions. Yeah, the, the, the board, the, uh, the staff was, had a little bit different take, listening skills came out number one uh, for the, for the staff, and I, I guess, just in general, that's a pretty common response. The, the, the staff, staff, we, we deal with a lot of municipalities, and, uh, staffs are pretty, pretty keen on making sure that they're, they want somebody who, who listens to them and, and, uh, seeks to understand rather than respond. So that's a pretty common one, that is usually, usually pretty highly ranked by, by staff. You know, working harmoniously with elected officials was very important to the, to this, to the staff. That history of stable tenures in previous positions was also important, important. And, um, and, uh, in a collaborative style was also important to staff as well as integrity. So, again, though, that's how you, how the, the Oregon team, a board and staff kind of came out in terms of the assessment. I want to scroll down a little bit further in the report, if we could. We, we did have a couple of, uh, comments from village board members, they want somebody who's a forward thinker, keeping the future needs of the village always in the forefront, and also show a commitment to inclusion in our community, which I took as, you know, you want somebody who's going to become part of the community, and is going to actually live in the community, hopefully, you know, so. Um, that was there, that was, uh, some, some good, good, good comments from board members. And then we did, um, Mike, I'm not sure you did this, but we did get a, uh, we got one community response. Very good one, um, a community member sent me an email, it was actually a pretty lengthy email that talked about what they'd like to see in the village administrator, uh, in the future. And, um, uh, some of the same things that you, of course, pointed out, that, you know, that, that background in budgeting and capital improvement planning, uh, government financing, somebody who's non-political, uh, a team builder, has some public works, management experience, digital communication skills, and some legal, um, you know, knowledge from a municipal perspective. And, um, again, pretty perceptive resident, I think, should possess a high degree of emotional intelligence and the ability to build effective working relationships with the village department heads. So, that's the assessment, we just wanted to make sure you saw that, because you all participated in that, and we thank you for that. And, um, based on that assessment, then we, we built the, uh, the draft, a job is, a job announcement, which I think is the next item. Any questions on the assessment? Assessment?
I have one. Uh, sure, this is Peterson here. You said, uh, under the comment, um, when, when the, um, someone said a commitment to inclusion in our community, uh, and you may have a better context for this than I do, but that, to me, says not so much that the person, I mean, granted, we want an administrator to live in our community, but more like making sure that the people who are already in our community feel welcome here. You know, people of color, um, you know, things like that, 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 that we're being inclusive, people with disabilities, and, you know, any, anybody that's here feels welcome, that's, that's how I read that.
Okay.
But I didn't make the comment, so disclaimer.
Well, you, you make a good point in that, um, I was just working a couple of weeks ago with another community, and it has, has a large Hispanic population, it also has a large deaf population, it's actually Delevin, which has the school for the deaf. So they wanted, in their announcement, they wanted, um, experience in a, in a diverse community and one that is inclusive. That's something we can certainly say about Oregon, if you want to have a, a brief, um, again, we, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to put together a statement here in, in as, words as possible, but we could certainly include that, if that's something that you want to, uh, that type of experience and skills, skills that you want to bring to your community.
Jeanie?
Mm-hmm, go ahead, Randy.
So, I, I just want to say, when, when I read it, I read it the same way I think Amanda read it. Uh, okay, inclusion of people, not, uh, a- as Amanda said, we obviously want somebody committed to the community, but when I read that, it's that everybody is welcome, everybody is treated fairly, um, that's how I read it as well.
Okay.
But I, but I haven't read that, you know, the original, but that's, that's how I see it.
I, I guess the, the question, we're, we're going to get to the announcement, do we want to say something like that in the announcement? I'm, I guess I'm hearing that, that's something that's very important to the village board, and maybe we should communicate that to prospective candidates.
I think it's important, yep.
Yeah, I, I say included to, if we can, I, I think that's something that, uh, you know, we had a, a big rally by the Oregon Allies this past summer uh, in support of, uh, Black Lives Matter and, and trying, you know, we, we have kind of a ground swell of people who would like to see our community be more inclusive, so I think that is important moving forward to include that.
Yes. Well.
Oh, go ahead, Cory.
I, I completely agree with what Amanda said, I, I think including that, um, you know, commitment to in the job description would, would be wonderful. And also, I, I would like to point out that, that we welcome, um, uh, you know, diverse candidates as well, um, just, you know, specifically say that, you know, we welcome anyone to apply for this position. You know, I, I think that's one thing that I would like to, to see added to the description as well.
Making a note of it, we'll, we'll certainly include that in the redraft, so. Well, do we, if, if there's no more, you know, I think we can go move on to the announcement, uh, the draft announcement, we do that?
Sure.
So, so this is a draft, um, we, we, again, this will be going out, um, on various, about forty different places we post this, uh, all over the country, different places where candidates might be looking. Uh, we're also going to use this as, as a, a basis for a script that we're going to work with a village president, operator, on putting together the video announcement. But, um, just, you know, you know, if there's any, any, you know, we, we really want to make sure you have a chance to take a look at this and, uh, make any suggested changes, uh, that you want to see in, in this announcement. Again, we have to keep it fairly short, I mean, I don't, you know, we, we sometimes, some of the publications have some restrictions on the total number of, of words, but, um, I'm just, just, uh, wanting to make sure that you had a chance to review this. And if it, it, does it, does it capture what, what you want in a, in a candidate, and it all, does it also capture, uh, what you want to convey as a community to prospective candidates?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Um, so, oh, I'm apologizing, apologize. Um, spend some time looking at the, um, job announcement, a few questions. Um, the forty or so places that were, they, the plan is to post it, are we going to be able to see a list of those places, or, um, how is that, uh, determined, I guess?
I see, Jacobson, they were all in our proposal, so if you went back to our proposal, they're all listed there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Many, many of them are universities, we, we, we like to post, um, at, uh, some of the more prominent universities and colleges that have public administration programs. So, for example, we posted at Brigham Young University, we posted at University of Kansas, we posted at Syracuse University. Those are some of the top schools in the country, and they typically have alumni who are, you know, pretty prominent in the field, and so we like to do that. And, and then, just, just one more point, you know, we'll, we'll certainly post it in the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, the Minnesota League, professional associations, uh, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, um. Is it just me that's hearing that echo from me, or is that, sorry?
It's just every once in a while, you keep going, it's fine.
Okay, all right, so I'm like, I don't want to annoy y'all with an echo here. Um, okay, um, and, uh, other question was, I saw how you had included from the survey the language in the announcement, which I liked, and I was, but I was wondering if there was a way that we could include some more, um, general competencies, uh, or if that would be more for the, the actual description versus the announcement, um, to kind of widen that net of what we're looking for?
Sure, um, it's a good point, we will actually be producing a, uh, eight to ten-page profile, which we'll use for direct marketing, and that will have some specific competencies in it that go much farther than this particular document. Um, we, we, we have a draft of that already done, Chris has done, uh, put that together, most of it. And, um, but we wanted to have the discussion tonight, so that we were ma- making sure we were inclusive of, of everything you wanted to have in that particular document. So we will have a draft for that, uh, Chris, maybe you could comment. We'll probably have a draft of that to Mike by the end of the week, maybe, something like that. Chris, I don't know.
You muted, Chris.
You don't want to hear my dog bark, so, um, so I have, uh, we have a, a pair, small paragraph on skills and past performance. Um, we usually put something on, uh, you know, we expand on human resource management, what that means. You know, it says in here, human resource management, we would kind of define what we're looking for. Um, we also talk about community planning and development and expand on that. Um, you have the budget and finance in here, we also expand on that, as well as the personal qualities. We have about a paragraph in there on personal qualities, that really, you know, tries to, uh, capture what you've, uh, uh, what you told us. And, uh, we put that in the profile, we put it in the profile because, um, we can't put it right in the announcement because, uh, uh, of the word limit. So we really expand on that as part of the, uh, position profile.
Thank you, um, and then I did have one last question, then I'll stop taking up, uh, all the airspace. Um, in the announcement, I noticed that it, it, um, specified, oh, hold on, let me get it pulled up. It's best, specified specifically, uh, I'll read the sentence, requires bachelor's degree in public or business administration or related field, prefers master's degree with at least seven years of progressively responsible administration and leadership experience in a municipal organization. I was just wondering, um, is that the standard language for a role like this? Uh, mainly, uh, I'll, I'll tell you where my head was at, when, in reading that, um, when we talk about the idea of wanting to hire more diverse slate of candidates, it may not all have master's degrees, but they might have the experience that would, that could be leveraged in that way, and I'm just concerned, I know that sometimes even saying master's degree preferred can, um, signal to some people who may not have that, that, uh, maybe their experience isn't enough. So I didn't know if, um, if, if, uh, eight to ten-page description would expand on that more, or if that was, uh, more details, I guess, around that particular aspect.
That's usually not in the profile as much, uh, as in the, um, as in the announcement. Uh, Kevin, uh, that's, I've always, uh, usually don't put something like that in the profiles, because that's something you need to put in the. I don't know if a standard is, um, there usually is a sentence about, uh, military or uh, business experience.
Yep, that's, it's just after that one.
Yeah, that's in there, and that has helped as well. You know, for some boards, they've appreciated that, having that in there and actually took that into consideration.
Yeah, no, I liked that a lot, I definitely did.
Well, as, as a firm, I'll just make a comment that, that, you know, we're not fixated on master's degree candidates, although even in the smallest communities, we, we find, you know, seventy-five to ninety percent of the candidates are going to have master's degrees. It just, it's just, it's just, it's just part of the marketplace right now. But, but we, we, if a person has really good, um, skill set and experience, and it matches what, you know, the village wants, and, and only has a bachelor's degree, we think that person should be strongly considered, you know, I mean, it's as simple as that. So, master's degree is not, um, it's not really part of the matrix, if you will, you know, so, you know, it's, it's just something that, that, um, we just see it's very common, uh, to see with, it, with most candidates, you know.
Thank you.
Uh, Cory, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm, I keep going back to the section where it says residency is strongly encouraged. And as much as I want our, our, um, administrator, you know, to kind of be interwoven and a part of the community, with a job description, I could see how someone would read that as, we want one of our own, we don't want to hire somebody from outside of our area. So I'm a, a little bit kind of on the fence of whether I want to see that included or not. Or maybe it just gets reworded in a different way.
Um, it, well, this is, this is a, a very key issue. It, 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 for, for many boards, this is a really a key issue. And what we're finding, and Chris, please jump in here, because you do a lot of this as well with me. We, we see a lot of the, the younger candidates that do not want to be part of the community, they want to live someplace else, they might have a spouse or significant other who, who, um, uh, works, you know, in Milwaukee, and so they, they have to, you know, work that out, you know, and so, um, but at the same time, you know, we know that, you know, and Chris and I are kind of old school, every place, every place that I've ever managed and, and run in, in, as a city or village administrator, I've lived in the community, because we think we're more effective, then we can be, we can more, be more empathetic and, and, in, in, in working on, on local issues. You know, we could soften this a little bit, uh, we, we don't have to put it in at all, it, it's, it's really up to the board. It's just that typically, we, 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 we have, uh, you have boards that really want to see somebody live and be part of the community, you know.
Agreed.
But we can certainly, I, you know, I, I, rather than soften it, I just take it out entirely, maybe, you know, that's up to you, but.
Jeanie?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I want something in, in there, uh, it, it doesn't, it's not a requirement, but it's strongly encouraged. I would be more comfortable if somebody lived in the community. I would be more comfortable if somebody lived in the community myself. That would be important to me.
Could, could we say something like residency or relocation to Oregon is highly preferred?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
I think it's important that they live in the, in the area.
Would Genie in the area or in the village?
Well, I would just say in the community. I mean, if they find a nice house outside of town, you know what I mean? I don't know.
I mean, because with some, some places will say, well, now you, you know, the state now, a couple of years ago, they, they sort of eliminated residency requirements. But in some, in the old days, you could, they would say you got to live in the village or live in the school district, for example. So, so you may want to be, so someone who's a candidate will, if you're asking that kind of question or action that putting that in the job announcement. If you want them to really live in the village boundaries, then. The way Kevin or Chris has it, that's, that's typically what you see. If you're seeing the communities, some people would consider that to be school district, as an example. I'm not saying that's wrong, just saying that's, you know, if you're looking for a job, you, you, you look at that, yep.
We, we also try, we certainly, you know, boards can ask questions about. You know, how do you feel about becoming a member of our community and living here? I mean, that's a, that's a valid question you can ask. And, and we've even had some communities go as far as to require uh, residency within a certain amount of, of um. A mileage uh, because of a certain um, emergency management responsibilities in, in terms of response. Um, we had one this summer of, of a village um, that actually changed it, its ordinance so that the new, new administrator would have to live within, I think it was a twenty mile radius, so. Yeah, again, we can, we can take, we can leave it in, we can take it out. Um, it's really up to you, but.
Yeah, Jenna or Amanda, what do you guys think?
Mandy, you want to go first?
Yeah, I think it's important that we make some kind of decision here. I guess I'd be leaning towards um. A little bit bigger range than just the village, but I like the idea of requiring them to live in the Oregon School District. So that they're at least close enough to respond to emergencies, to um, be part of the community. I mean, if they're in Fitchburg, I, you know, I'm okay with that. They're, they're still invested in uh, how the Village of Oregon does as a village. Um, because it's the same kind of general neighborhood, so. Uh, I mean, I'd, I'd be open to whatever other boundaries people want to suggest, but I do like requiring them to be in the area.
So, oh, sorry, Genie, okay, um, I have to say, I like the idea of having the administrator living in our community, but I'm hesitant to make it a requirement. Um, most, for a couple of reasons, uh, or I, I would be curious, I guess, to find out what uh, details would be else around the requirement. For instance, if um, we, since we don't know what all the different candidates' personal situations are, the salary, I think, is, is pretty generous, but. You know, maybe they have a lot of student loans and they, or we, it takes them a really long time to find a house in the community that they can afford or. Um, for all these different barriers that I can think of that might make it take some time for them to find a place in our community. Uh, I think, I, I would be, I would be careful with the language that we use because I don't want to make it seem like they have to relocate within the year. But they're, then they're having a hard time finding a place or eventually they're not ready to make that move yet or whatever the case may be, but I would like it. Um, uh, impressed upon them that this is an eventual desire that we have is that they make, they, they come to the community.
What, why don't I just make a suggestion? What if we said residency in the village or. Or Oregon School District is highly, is, is preferred. Uh, again, you cannot, as I think Mike pointed out, that under current state law, you can't require uh, residency. But you can, you, what we see many village board and city councils do is, is they provide incentives. They move, they'll, they'll move if. The move of candidate in, or a new administrator into the community. If they establish residency within a certain period of time, or maybe they'll even give them a one-time bonus if you do it, do it. Um, there's a variety of different ways to try to, try, try to address that issue. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead with that, Kevin?
We'll work with that, okay. Um, and you'll, you'll get a, you'll, you'll get another look at this at your next meeting, so um. Anything else in the announcement that you're concerned about or that you want to, you want to change or modify?
All right, looks like we can keep going.
Okay. Um. Think you have a salary survey, I think, uh, Mike just asked us if we would just give you a quick uh, quick analysis of that. Um, I, you know, I think your, your range that we have is, is fine. You can see it's, you know, it's kind of all over the board. You know, in, in communities in this, in this range of, you know, from what, seven thousand to twelve thousand, but um. Um, I don't know if you have any questions about this. This, this is all current uh, twenty twenty salary information. Um, um, I don't know, Mike, did you want to say anything about this or, I, I think, again, I think your range is, is perfect. I think it's. It really where, is where it should be.
Yep, so, so the board did a, or we did a survey a couple of years ago, like Candy did a pretty in-depth survey of our comparables. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with the salary ranges is in, is comparable with the other Dane County communities, like Verona and the Forest and places like that. So it should not hurt our recruitment.
No, I, I, I'm, Chris and I are very confident that we're going to get some very good candidates at the range that we have, so I, I don't think it's an issue at all.
Yep.
So, so that was really just an information item. I think Mike wanted to make sure you saw that, and so we prepared that. And then the schedule, I think we want to talk about that, Mike, right?
Yep.
You, you want to kick off the discussion there on the?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, Genie, this goes back to the discussion. I, I can't remember if I had this with you regarding this position or some other position that, you know, you feel like we need to, we need to. Uh, interview the finalists in person.
Yes.
And, and so I, I dug out uh, Dane County's uh, emergency order number ten, which went into effect on November eighteenth and expires on December sixteenth. But the, the rumor, the good rumor is that they're going to extend it the way it goes with COVID happening in the community. We could not have a in-person meeting uh, at the end of February to do in-person if, if this type of order is in place.
Sure.
And so Kevin and I were talking about this last week is, you know, what? Wha- what do we do? I mean, one of the, one of the thoughts would be to delay the announcement um, a little bit. Hopefully, maybe push the interviews into March. And hopefully with the vaccine and things are improving, that we could, we could have an in-person interview at that point. And it would just, it would just extend the, the recruitment out. I don't know, Kevin, two to three weeks, something like that.
I think we would extend the recruitment. Right now it's scheduled to end um.
April fifth.
Well, no, the, the application.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, would be done about January twenty-seventh. I'd extend it maybe to mid-February. If you want to do that. It, it, that, that would be helpful. I mean, it just gives more time for us to recruit, you know, but.
Because here, and here's the other thing that we talked about is this, this, we want to have this board, if we can, make the decision to, to do the hiring. And, and technically, your last meeting is April nineteenth. So um, I think we got to work towards having this board make the decision to hire the new administrator. But then also try to work around the health order. So it's a little tricky, but yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. It, I, I'm assuming the board's agreeing with Genie's opinion that you would prefer to do the finalists in person if you can. My, my, and, okay.
Yeah, I think we've probably all been involved in enough hiring processes in our careers that. Um, just, there's something, I mean, I've done, I've done Skype, you know, back when Skype was a thing.
Yep.
And then we met the person in person and it was just, it was a completely different experience. And this is such an important position. I just like, I just feel like we can't afford to get it wrong. So if we have to wait, that's fine. If there's a way that. We can do things via Zoom and then see if we can meet them, you know, like maybe two at a time or something. I'm, I mean, I, whatever you feel is best, but.
Yeah.
Somehow it has something, some part of it has to be in person.
Yeah, I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that things will, will, will be better uh, later in the winter, I'm hoping. That's the case with the vaccine coming out and everything, so. Because right now, we, we could not have a meeting in place or in person, sorry. So, so Kevin, so you're saying that you would just extend the closing date? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I think we just extend that. Um, may, maybe we, you know, get the announcement out a little bit later. We could start maybe right after the first of the year. But maybe go about five weeks or six weeks. Um, I don't want to have it out too long because then people delay and delay and, and maybe might lose a good candidate too. I don't know, you know, I mean, that might be. There, there are other communities that are, that are going to be looking for administrators early next year, so. So it's a kind of competitive situation as well, but um. On the positive side, I, I do want to tell the board that we've had at least uh, seven or eight people contact us about Oregon, Oregon. I'm sorry, I always say Oregon, I'm, I'm used to the state, I was in Oregon, but um, Oregon and um. Uh, so that's really positive that people have it on their radar screen and are, are really jazzed about applying for the position, so that's good, so.
Good.
Um, so if we, we, so if, if, so Mike, I think you, you, you want to push that out. I can redo this schedule a little bit and.
Yeah, we'll show, you know, let's go to the next meeting, let's do that.
Okay, we'll, we'll move that up a little bit and then um. Um, we had one more item and Mike, I think we wanted to talk about the community engagement piece.
Yes, please, yep.
Yeah, um, well, I know that when we were interviewed for the um, for this assignment, that um, at least one, I believe it was trustee Jacobson mentioned that. You know, importance of engaging the community in the process. Um, and, and, you know. One of the things that I brought to Mike a few weeks ago was the possibility of working with one of our partner organizations called Polco. I don't know if you know about Polco. Polco is a company that actually started in Whitewater a few years ago and does online. Uh, real-time polling uh, for municipalities across the country now. And um, I approached them with the idea of getting involved with um, with your community. Um, to try to get information from the community about, you know, what they'd like to see in a new administrator. And they were, they were willing to, to do that with us, in fact, uh, to do it on a pilot basis at no cost to the village, which I thought was pretty, pretty cool. So um, the, the problem though was, you know, we, and maybe we have more time now, Mike, if we push this back, but. The problem is we, we, you know, we had, we had to put together a survey instrument, we had to get it, we have to market it out to the community and. And there's a little bit of work on the, on the village staff behalf because we have to get that out and we have to get a, a database of. Of residents that we would send it to. So, so what Mike and I were talking about, and please interject if I don't, if I'm not getting this right, uh, Mike, but what we talked about is maybe doing this, you know. During the recruitment phase is actually trying to get some information uh, from your residents about what they, that, what they see is very important. Uh, to see in a, in a new village administrator. And I think, you know, now with a little bit of lead time, we could get you a, a survey document and um. And we can try to push that out through Polco and you could also see how Polco works and, uh, because I, 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 I think it's a really a neat tool of, for community engagement. Um, if used, if used, if used correctly, you know, used well. So anyway, you want to add to that, Mike, or?
No, that was a good summary. Okay. And you're right now with a little more time, we could, we could uh, work on the survey and. Amanda, does that sort of get maybe a, a little bit of the community involvement piece you're looking at?
Yeah, and you know, I'm, I, when I say community too, I'm also thinking of um, you know, business owners and developers. And people who, who have some knowledge of what a village administrator does, although anybody would be open, you know. They can all weigh in, but I think there's a certain section of the population that would want to respond and a section that would just be like, whatever. Uh, so um, you know, we put it out to everybody and, and people who have an opinion can partake and, and people who don't will ignore it.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, good idea.
Yeah, that sounds like a positive response, Kevin.
Okay, um, we, we just, there'll be a little bit of staff time, Mike, to help us with this, of course. I mean, we, we need to rely on you guys to help us uh. Just to get the word out, so. But yeah, I'll work with you, Mike, if that's okay, and then we'll get a survey instrument and uh, have the, have the board take a look at it before we roll it out, so.
Yep.
Oh, Jenna, Jenna has a comment?
Uh, I just had a question, but it was unrelated to the um, Polco survey topics, so I didn't want to let you finish up, but.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, I saw on the timeline the confidential mini resumes. I was just wondering if you could give me a little bit more detail on what. What that, um, what that is or what is contained in those or not contained in those?
Yeah, um, good question. Um, what we do is, we really give uh, the basic information about each candidate. Uh, it would be their educational background, any professional certifications or uh, additional education um. Uh, that they have. And then they're basically their work experience by job title. And then we, we also, um, you know, we don't send you every single resume or every, uh, you know, we ask for references, we ask for salary information. It was a cover letter. So we try to distill that down and we try to present the candidates. These are the qualified candidates. These are the, the second tier candidates, which. Um, maybe they don't meet all your qualifications, but you know, maybe it's that bachelor's, uh, you know, bachelor's candidate who's got really good experience. Or maybe it's somebody in the private sector that, you know, has done some work but doesn't, hasn't, doesn't have all the, you know, the, the administrative experience in local government that maybe some others have. So then you, you, from that, from that candidate list, the mini resumes, the, the board will decide who you want to pursue further, you know, and, and uh. And that's, and we, we keep those, that information because we can keep it confidential, number one. And number two is um. You know, most boards don't want to, you know, wade through, you know, hundreds of pages of resumes and things like that, so. Um, so, so that's what that's all about. I can, if you, if you be interested, I could send you a. I can send you an example that, I'd have to send one that's kind of old, just, but, but I can send you an example of that if you want, I mean.
That would be, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'd love that.
I'll send that to Mike and then that's what you can expect for Oregon, you know, so.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, what's, what's left, Kevin?
I think, I think the last thing, or Kevin, right, was the finalizing the assessments under process. That, that's what I had on the agenda, or are we doing it at a different date?
Yeah, I, I think we, you know, we've, you know, we've got a lot of things to, to work on here, uh, but. The, and if it's going to be pushed back a, a little bit of time, but let me just throw a couple of things for the board to, to start thinking about. We typically have a two-day process uh, in which we bring the candidates to your community. Uh, it could be on a Thursday night, it could, it could be during the week, I mean, but it's typically on a Fri- Friday and Saturday because with working uh, board members. Um, you know, it's, it's hard for you, you all to take off during the week uh, and, and spend a half a day interviewing people. So what we, we start with is, we, we like to do a tour of the community. Um, and we like to get people that maybe, you know, it could be that somebody from the Chamber of Commerce, it could be the school district superintendent, it could be a principal. You know, people who know the community, what's going on, they give tours to the candidates. And then we also want to engage your staff in the process and we, we typically call it a conversation as opposed to an interview. We wanted to be more convivial and, and, and to be um. Uh, you know, more, you know, conversational, you know, and, and we typically do that, that would be on a Friday afternoon. We would do the tour and then also um. Have a staff, a chance to interact with the staff. And you define who you want to, you know, as staff and who, who would be involved in that. And then typically that evening, we have some kind of community meet and greet, um, which, you know, it's going to be very difficult with uh, COVID. Uh, to try to get something in person, but you know, I think we can probably work something out with, with uh, some of the various um. Platforms that are out there, Zoom or others, um, that we could possibly try to engage the, your community and um. In, in meeting the candidates and maybe asking a few questions. Um, back before COVID, we would sometimes have. Hundred people show up at these, these meet and greets and uh, we would typically break the candidates into small groups. And they can give a little kind of elevator speech. Um, and then um. People can ask questions, you know, of, of the candidates. And then we collect uh, citizen or, or, you know, participant. Um, uh, in. input in terms of what they thought about the candidates, you know, what did they, they thought, thought about the candidates. So, and then we, we pull that together in a report for the, for the board. And then the next day, then, then certainly the keystone of the, the next day would be the interview with the village board. We like to include a, a writing exercise, we, we, we have a variety of scenarios that we can give you to, you know, to help, you select a scenario for a writing exercise. The candidates have one hour to, to respond, it's typically a memo to the board on some topic. In your case, it might be good to, you know, it's not only to see how they write, but also how they, you know, how much information or how much knowledge they have on a certain topic. So TIF might be a one in your case, you might want to have a TIF, a question or TIF scenario. And then we also typically do an emotional intelligence assessment, it's all online and you're given a very detailed report on each candidate. And then there's a variety of other exercises we can develop for you, I mean, from leaderless group discussions to, to in-basket exercise, to, we could see, you know, we could put up a public speaking type of, a public speaking, exercise, that's really up to you, we can work that out with you, but it's typically a two-day process and we, we can, we can, we can, we can, work on this a little bit further along in the process, but it's, just want you to be aware, it's, it's a pretty intensive process for, for everyone because it's, the, the candidates are under quite a bit of scrutiny and are going through a number of exercises, so.
Sounds good.
So I think we have our marching orders, we know where we want to go, so we appreciate your time. And of course, it's great to work with Mike and knowing he's going to be here for a few more months.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, well, thank you for all your time tonight, gentlemen, we appreciate it and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Okay, we'll see, we'll work on these things and we'll work with Mike and get them, get them done, so.
Sounds good, thank you. All right. Moving on to item four C, this is from the November 12th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. First item is discussion and possible action regarding approving the general development plan, the GDP, submitted by Lakestone Properties for nine seventeen, nine nineteen and nine forty-seven, nine fifty-seven, Janesville Street. So first up was review of public comments, we have a letter or letters in our packet from a neighboring landowner, the, the Galena property companies, and they've expressed some concern about how close the building number three is going to be to some of their apartment buildings. I don't know, Elise, do you, do you feel comfortable kind of talking a little bit about what's, what's been discussed so far and future S I P plans?
Sure, and I believe there might be a representative from Galena Properties on the line too, so if they have anything to add, they're welcome to do that too, of course. But I sent Jeannie a note today, just letting you all know that this letter was in the packet, but I have spoken with the representatives. These folks own and manage the Hankov Apartments that are on Park Street, they're just to the east of the Lakestone Project, so, sort of just in their backyard there, and they've had a couple ongoing concerns, they voiced a few times that Planning Commission, you know, the comp plan and then meetings. I think the main, they're overall in support of the project and the development and supportive of affordable housing in this area. They have a couple of concerns, you know, if that commercial site becomes a convenience store, I think they have some concerns with lighting and noise and I let them know that, that's not, you know, a certain use of that site yet. And when we get to that point of knowing what the user for that site will be, that would be a time to address specific concerns with that use. They also have a concern about the building height, that is one thing that's addressed in the GDP to allow a taller building, but, you know, we have other three-story buildings with underground parking within the village, and so I think, the Planning Commission, and I feel that's, you know, an appropriate height for this area. And then kind of one specific concern they've had is, you remember from the plans, there's an L-shaped building?
Wow.
This location, so here's Wolf Street, Quick Trip, and I would stop and go. This L-shaped building, they feel is, is too close to their property, I think the building is about sixty feet away and that's a specific, you know, item we brought up, the Planning Commission a couple of times, and planning commissioners didn't have any major concerns with that, but again, that, specific question will be something that's addressed at the S I P level, we're, we're not there yet. Probably in January or February, I imagine will be when we're looking at the S I P for this project, so. I let the folks from the Galena company know to stay engaged. They just, I think, want to make sure that the board is aware they have these ongoing concerns, but I don't see any need, from my perspective, for you all to hold up a vote on the GDP based on these couple specific concerns.
Thanks, thanks, Elise. The, I'm assuming there's some folks from the Galena property, we can hear you in the background, did you want to make any comments at this time? Okay, so if you don't want to make any comments, if folks could just mute your microphones, that'd be great. Okay, and then Brian, I see that Brian's on the call too, I think, the, the concerns in, in that letter are, are going to be talked more about at the S I P level. Brian, are you guys still talking about doing that, that elevation map for the Planning Commission when you bring in the S I P to kind of show, you're going to show us how the buildings kind of match up as an elevation?
Yep, we've engaged our engineer to move forward with getting us some height differences between the neighboring properties, so we should have more information on that when we're ready for the S I P.
Okay, so, yeah, so I've been on the Plan Commission for a while, so those, for board members who you might not, these are lots of, lots of lingo. There's two major parts of approving a development to go forward. The first is a general development plan, which the Planning Commission spends a lot of time on. And then the second is the site implementation plan, which is very specific. Plan Commission members drill down into lighting, into like the, 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 the level of incandescent bulbs.
Exterior materials.
Really, it can take a very long time, so I feel comfortable that this Plan Commission will figure out a, a good resolution to that when we come to the S I P. So, so when we go on to item two, then I'm going to bring this forward as a motion. So just to let you know, at November 12th, Planning Commission, being a move seconded by Moleson, to recommend to the Village Board the approval of the General Development Plan, submitted by Lakestone Properties for nine seventeen, nine nineteen and nine forty-seven, nine fifty-seven, Janesville Street, contingent upon the staff comments in, in the addition of dashed parking installs for future development, as well as adding some stone to the front columns of the main entry, and that motion carried seven zero. So I would bring that motion to the Village Board for approval, is there a second?
Jeannie, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You go to the next page, Elise, we, we have to do this by order, so we have to do the first motion as to wave.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I should have told you that beginning.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, anyway, so that's what I'm recommending.
Yeah.
So the first, okay, so then I would, so I'll just go on to number three.
Just staying on your motion, yeah, just for a second.
Okay, and so for public watching, you're going to see us probably vote to waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. All that means is that we don't read pages and pages and pages of documents out loud. So we're still being very transparent and the board can still move forward. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we suspend the rules and waive those lengthy first and second readings at tonight's meeting, and we will need a two-thirds vote of the board to, to do that. So is there a second to that motion?
A second, Jeannie.
All right, thanks, Randy. Any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, so we have, that's unanimous, that passes the two-thirds test. Okay, and then the second motion that I'm going to bring forward is what I just read, but it's actually in ordinance 2011. So I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 2011 that changes a zoning classification of property located at the addresses that I read, or no, this is, that's something different. Is it?
It's, no, this is actually.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yep, so it would actually change the zoning classifications of the properties. So is there a second to that? I saw Jenna, yep, and then questions on this? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, thanks for helping move this procedure on there.
Sure.
All right, Brian, anything else you have for us? I don't think.
No, we're good, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Hey, Jeannie, this is Linda Fisher, I'm with Galena Management, I'm so sorry, Joe was not able to join us with the video or audio part. Just wanted to say if there's any questions, I know you've already voted and that's perfectly fine, we know what we're representing is not something you were voting on tonight, but if there was any questions that anybody had about our position, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you, Linda, thanks for being here. Any, yeah, any questions for Linda from the board? Linda, it sounds like we, and you, and you know us, we'll be talking more about your concerns at the site, or the, the site imitation plan process at the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, yeah, so just, yeah, stay, stay engaged, stay involved and we'll keep, we'll keep going.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, excellent. So we're done, we're good with that?
Yep.
Yeah, so I would just say, I would just thank Brian and Brett, who, I don't know if Brett's here, but thank you for continuing down this very lengthy process of working with the municipality to potentially build affordable housing.
Yeah, we're a hundred percent on board, guys, we're doing everything we can, we just submitted our WETA packet last week, it was quite an undertaking, but, things are moving forward nicely. We'll have some conversations with our engineer, again, things are tight on the site as you can see, but, we'll always try to take neighbor, neighbors' concerns into consideration, look at some grading plans, see if there's anything to be done that can slide some things around. Obviously, it's a give and take, we could lose some parking and some other things, but we'll look at it, so we'll do what we can to, you know, make these future meetings go smoothly.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks.
All right, then I think we are done with that agenda item. All right, so now we are at item four E. All right, so this is a presentation by Police Chief Pagan cough regarding some issues going on at headquarters. And this is noticed for closed session at the end of the meeting, if we want to go into closed session. So this is how I'm thinking that this agenda item will go, we'll have a report from, from Chief Pagan cough. And then I believe Jamie Bush is on the call, we'll hear from Jamie Bush. And then we'll have some board comments or questions after that, if that sounds, okay? So if you're having, if you're having questions or comments during the chief's report, perhaps write those down. Because I'd rather have the chief talk and then have Jamie talk and then have comments and questions after both, that sound okay with everybody? All right, okay, chief, the, the floor is yours and we have information in our packet on this.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to present this material to you. I'm just going to walk through some of this and highlight various things that were included in the packet. I brought some concerning information forward to the village administrator regarding headquarters. We wanted to bring this information to the village board's attention to discuss what can be done to address the continual issues at headquarters. But upon consulting with attorney Dragny about having that initial discussion in closed session about these matters to avoid embarrassing Mr. Bush or bringing this into open session. In consulting with attorney Dragny, he advised we could not legally go into closed session, so this is why I'm here presenting this way. To, to hi, I'm just going to walk through some of the contacts we've had, and then I'll add some other comments at the end here. On five nineteen of seventeen at nine thirteen PM, we had an incident where a citizen called in. A subject was found lying in the grass between headquarters and Quick Trip. The officer did find a small bottle of whiskey in the subject's pocket. The subject told officers he had been at headquarters all day. His preliminary breath test was a point two nine, so that is our on-the-street test. It said two, we have subjects blowing two, and that's the result we got. A point two nine is what he blew, to give you an idea of the comparison, a point oh eight and above, you shouldn't be driving. So just to put some context there. On six twenty-eight of seventeen at two fifty-two AM, a female subject was seen walking from headquarters towards Quick Trip South. She was swaying back and forth while walking, the officer noted she was highly intoxicated. On eight twenty-seven of seventeen at two oh six AM, officers responded to headquarters for a reported intoxication, sorry, intoxicated female having difficulty standing and maintaining consciousness. The preliminary breath test was a point three one five. The female had shown up highly intoxicated, but the bartender still served her one drink at headquarters. On February fifteenth of twenty eighteen, yeah, Detective Jansen, who was the current liaison at the time, contacted Mr. Bush, the owner of headquarters. Mr. Bush was provide, provided us with his email and Detective Jansen then gave him some resources in electronic form. On February second, twenty-second of that same year, Detective Jansen received an email from Jamie while on vacation. Detective Jansen followed up with some answers and Mr. Bush indicated he would be pursuing some standardized training for his, moving forward. So that was February twenty-second. On March thirty-first, twenty eighteen, this one, I wanted to explain a little bit more because it's confusing, there were two separate cases, but they were connected. At one forty-eight AM, we responded to a report of a hit-and-run where a parked vehicle had been struck as well as a mailbox. While handling the hit-and-run and trying to investigate it, the officers were then called to a disturbance, which involved two females. Those two females were associated with a vehicle that had caused the hit-and-run. The female, the passenger had passed out in her own vomit, and that is one of the reasons we were called to that disturbance. The preliminary breath test for that passenger was a point two eight two. The driver later provided an intoxicimeter results, and intoxicimeter is utilized for operating well intoxicated, it's used in court later. Her result for that was a point in, indicated in that report that the last place of drink, according to the, the female driver, was headquarters. We did request video, but it was never turned over to police by headquarters staff. On May sixth of twenty eighteen at one oh seven AM, officers located a female subject stumbling, unbalanced and having difficulty walking. The female told the officer she left headquarters on foot to walk home from her residence on Charles Court, but was found in the seven hundred block of South Main Street. And so for those of you that aren't familiar with the locations of that Charles Court is essentially across the street from, RCI, I'm sorry, the middle school, and seven hundred block of South Main Street is far past that. She advised she had been nowhere other than headquarters. As our officers dealt with this individual, the female kicked the officer in the knee and the groin. She also attempted to bite the officer and was subsequently arrested for resisting in battery to a law enforcement officer. Her preliminary breath test was a point one five nine. On six eleven of eighteen at three ten AM, a passerby reported an intoxicated person, I'm sorry, on, yeah, on six eleven of eighteen at three ten AM, intoxicated person was located, passed out in an entryway to one thirty-nine Wolf Street, which is across the street from headquarters. The subject reported he had two vodka and cranberries at headquarters. On July fifteenth, at two, in two thousand and eighteen, Detective Jansen, again, the current liaison at the time, documented that after weeks of communicating with Mr. Bush over presenting training material on the indicators of impairment, no staff showed up to the training that was scheduled for that day. Detective Jansen literally went to the establishment and no one was there to attend the training. Mr. Bush also was not in attendance as well. Later in a meeting with Officer Hatfield, who eventually became the liaison in two thousand and twenty, on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, Mr. Bush told him that he did not make the training mandatory and acted as though he was not aware that he could have. On eight thirty-one of eighteen at one oh five AM. On 8/31/18 at 1:05 AM, there was a subject that did not admit to drinking at headquarters, but had been observed walking from that direction. He had a preliminary breath test of a .29. On 9/18/18 at 8:58 PM, headquarters staff reported that a customer was highly intoxicated, rude to customers and was advised to leave by staff. Staff reported when cus- the customer was walking to his vehicle, he fell into the pond. The subject then left and the police were unable to locate him. On 9/20 and 9/22/18, Detective Jansen, the current liaison at the time, contacted Mr. Bush and asked if there were any issues. And information was reported to supervisors regarding recent police department contacts. Moving into 2019, on 1/6/19 at 12:39 AM, a male subject was, I'm sorry, an officer observed the male subj- a male subject being carried out of headquarters with the assistance of two others. The subject had a small scrape on his forehead and appeared to have urinated himself and smelled of intoxicants. The officer was informed that the subject had vomited on himself in his vehicle. The subject refused to do the preliminary breath test. To explain that further, our police officers cannot force a person to submit to a preliminary, preliminary breath test. Therefore, if they refuse to do a preliminary breath test, the officers will document the level of intoxication that the individual is at based on their training and prior experience in law enforcement. Therefore, that is why you see documented that he urinated himself, smelled of intoxicants, et cetera. On March 12th, 2019, Officer Ray Felk came in as our new liaison and made contact with a shift manager, Derek. He explained to Derek that he was the new liaison and asked if he or any of his employees had any questions. There were none at that time. June 29th of 19, Officer Ray Felk left a voicemail for Mr. Bush informing him of the compliance checks results and that headquarters had passed those compliance checks. On July 28th of 2019, Officer Ray Felk made phone contact with Mr. Bush and advised him of an incident that had occurred on 7/28/19. And indicated he would answer Mr. Bush's questions when he returns the call. On July 28th, 2019, this would be the incident Officer Ray had reached out about. An officer had observed a male on the ground in the outdoor patio area of headquarters. The subject's father was attempting to wake up the subject. EMS responded to the area to assist. The subject submitted to a PBT preliminary breath test. The end result was .19%. Staff was interviewed and advised that the subject was intoxicated upon arrival to headquarters and they only served him one bush light. Staff advised they were unaware if the subject's friends were giving him drinks. One bartender advised he had seen the subject passed out, but believed that his friends were monitoring him. EMS responded for that, for the evaluation. Eight, one of 19, eight, five of 19, eight, 12 of 19, 10, five of 19. And those, on those dates, Officer Ray Felk again reached out to Mr. Bush to make sure he needed what he had and asked if he had any questions. He also reached out to Natasha, the bar manager at the time. On 11/19/19, Officer Ray Felk made phone contact with Mr. Bush and who was made aware of recent secondhand information about that patrons felt drugged after leaving headquarters. Mr. Bush stated he would talk to staff about this and advise of any pertinent information. On 11/28/19 at 1:56 AM, a manager located a male subject who was passed out in a woman's bathroom at headquarters. He was ultimately transported to St. Mary's ER due to the intoxication. December 25th of 2019, Officer Ray Felk also made contact with the bar manager. And this was in regards to a private party, asking if they needed anything, had any questions. I won't go through a lot of Officer Hatfield's notes because they're pretty detailed as is. But in January of 2020, April 12th of 2020, he reached out over various issues, the governor's orders, as well as now being assigned his new liquor liaison. On 6/17/20 at 12:49 AM, a subject was observed falling multiple times in the QuickTrip parking lot, which resulted in facial injuries. He had consumed alcohol beverages at his residence and he then went to headquarters where he continued to consume alcohol. He was unable to stand, walk or get up. His preliminary breath test indicated he had an end result of .32. He was transported to Meriter Hospital. Headquarters staff reported that they only served the subject two beers and a double captain and Coke. The bartender advised that he did not seem to be intoxicated and walked fine when he left headquarters. On 7/17/20, 8:01 PM, two subjects were heavily intoxicated and lying in the bushes outside of headquarters. One of the subjects had a bloody eye from falling. The subjects had been consuming alcohol at headquarters. Headquarters staff who reported that the subject had two beers and two shots. At this point, after the July 22nd incident, I was briefed again from Officer Hatfield as to where we were at with our progress. And I asked Officer Hatfield, let's approach this differently. Let's take the documentation that I've just now covered, these incidents. That is what we had at the time. I said, meet with Mr. Bush and put this all out on the table and show him this is, this is what's going on in case at, in any of those, in any situations, he was not aware. There's some clear patterns here. There's similarities in the individuals that are involved. And go through ideas of how we can improve this and you'll see in Officer Hatfield's documentation, all that was discussed. Officer Hatfield did a great job of even thinking outside the box. He also consulted with me and other members of this department. Individuals that had been the liaisons in the past and had tried certain approaches and also supervisors. This was kind of this, here's everything. We, we gotta fix this. And you can certainly read those notes. That meeting occurred on July 27th, 2020. On July 31st, 2020 at 2:02 AM, patrons were arguing outside of headquarters. One of the males involved shoved a female, causing her to fall and hit her face on the concrete. The female was extremely intoxicated. Two males were intoxicated as well. One of the patrons involved advised that they had been consuming alcohol from 5 PM to 2 AM at headquarters. On 8/1/20 at 4:13 AM, I just have this noted that the outdoor music was left on. Our officers noticed it, drove by and notified the manager and worked with her to get that fixed. On August 8th at 3:25 AM, there were technically two incidents that occurred on this date, just to address if there's any confusion. At 3:25 AM, head, the headquarters bartender reported a male knocking on the door after hours and asking to be let in. The male was gone upon arrival and the officer walked the bartender to her vehicle. The male was later found at QuickTrip and arrested for ODI second offense. Officers had recalled having contact with that same subject earlier that night at headquarters and noted he appeared to be highly intoxicated then. On 8/8/20 at 11:47 PM, officers responded to a disturbance, a dispute between the bartender and a female patron who refused to wear a mask. A male associated with the female patron threw a table over the bar at the bartender. On 9/2/20 at 12:03 PM, they, again, an officer noticed that the outdoor music was still on. 12:03 PM, the, my understanding with headquarters would still be open, but it was raining and no one was outside. And based on complaints we've gotten in the past, we worked with the manager to turn the music off if, if it didn't need to be on. On 10/7/20 at 11:21 PM, officers responded to a verbal argument between headquarters employees that were off duty and intoxicated. The doors were locked after police were contacted and responding for the disturbance. Patrons were still inside consuming alcohol and at one point, employees would not let officers inside. I've attached this specific case to the packet. And there's a lot of detail on there that I think will explain further. And I will talk a little further about this as I get towards the end of my presentation. On 10/8/20 at 8:54 AM, a female reported she had loaned her vehicle to a headquarters employee last night, but she now thought it may be stolen because she did not know where it was. The manager reported that the employee who borrowed the vehicle had worked the night before and had been consuming alcohol that night. And maybe she did not recall eventually taking the vehicle or asking someone else to pick up the vehicle. The vehicle was later located at the boyfriend's residence and this would be the boyfriend of the female that borrowed the vehicle. On 11/25/20 at 10:59 PM, officers responded to a disturbance at headquarters involving, in quotes, lots of patrons. They made contact with a patron that had sustained facial injuries. Physical fight occurred between multiple males at headquarters. The manager allowed officers access to the video. All patrons involved in the fight had been consuming alcohol. To conclude my presentation, I just want to make it known, I wanted to be fair and consistent in addressing this matter. Therefore, with assistance of my staff, we researched all contacts that we have had with each establishment in the village of Oregon that sell alcohol. There was a significant difference in the amount of, the amount, the type and the frequency of contacts at headquarters versus all of the businesses. After Mr. Bush was informed that these matters would go in front of the village board for discussion, I received several emails that he had written with one directly sent to me. And I wanted to take this as a moment to address several of those concerns that he brought forward in those emails. One of his emails indicated he has had no contact with, with the Oregon Police Department regarding issues at headquarters since 8/5/20. We ceased contact with the establishment with issues after the incident that occurred on 10/7/20. That would be the one where the doors were locked. And an employee, a woman who said she worked for headquarters indicated that they were told by management not to contact law enforcement. An issue that Mr. Bush brought up was about me not reaching out to him about these issues as the new police chief. I've worked for this police department for the last 15 years and overseen this liquor liaison program since it began. The liquor liaison and that is assigned to every establishment is an extension of me when I was a lieutenant and now as the chief. After reading Mr. Bush's concerns, I've spent most of today personally reviewing the video of the incident that occurred on 10/7/20 as Mr. Bush indicated he felt some of the information was misleading. Mr. Bush indicated that the information regarding staff being told not to contact police was, in his words, 100% false. Via body camera footage, I was able to confirm that the information in the reports for this incident was accurate. As the police officer arrived on scene, the female employee who showed signs of intoxication volunteered information to the officer about not contacting police during the first part of their conversation. The employee advised that she was told by management not to contact law enforcement or that they would be shut down. Later in the same contact, the female employee volunteered information to a different officer that they are told to not contact police or they could be closed down. The officer asked her who told her this and the female stated, in quotes, "I can't" and would not elaborate further on who told her this. The female employee told the second officer that she was done being, with being a manager. The female employee stated, in the last few months, three men have had, have been physically assaulted by women and she has told her fellow employees about it. During this incident, the officers who responded attempted to access the building to get additional information from staff at headquarters. However, they discovered that all the doors were locked. Upon reviewing video, I observed that one of the officers came across a patron who jumped a fence in front of headquarters. And when the officer confronted the individual, the individual advised he was just trying to get back into headquarters. After a period of time, the officers were able to get a customer to open the door for them. While reviewing the body camera footage, I observed that there were customers still inside headquarters when the doors were locked. After being informed of this case that occurred on 10/7/20, Officer Hatfield and I discussed how to proceed. I was fearful that further contact by myself or other officers would increase the probability of headquarters staff not contacting us in the future. Due to this, I contacted village administrator Mike Grace and we just had a conversation on how to proceed. In his email, Mr. Bush indicated that he was promised a police report for any contacts that we had with headquarters. Our officers are not authorized to release police reports to citizens as we have a formal open records policy. Mr. Bush is aware of this. He's aware of the procedures that need to be followed to obtain a police report as he has previously received a police report by our agency by completing an open records request and that occurred on 8/13/18. To note, there are older incidents that we have had at headquarters that go beyond 2017. I have not included them because this is a lot of information to start. If this village board is interested in that older information, I would be happy to put that together and provide it. To summarize, the assistance that we have provided to Mr. Bush and the headquarters staff in helping and proving on these issues, I've broken it down into two approaches. One approach is to our liquor liaison, who has used multiple strategies, including but not limited to notifying the owner of issues after they have occurred, consulting with the manager, offering training to identify over-serving. And on 7/27/20, a two-hour-long conversation Officer Hatfield had with Mr. Bush to discuss a majority of the contacts I have just briefed you on. The liaison program is designed to support and provide information to establishments that sell alcohol. The program is not designed to force or mandate an establishment into what is suggested or recommended. The other approach we have been and are currently using is through our night shift patrol sergeant, our officers. Our officers conduct frequent bar checks to assure headquarters staff have what they need to identify any overly intoxicated individuals and to identify any other suspicious activity. Given that we have received loud noise complaints about headquarters, our night shift officers have been regularly checking the business to make sure the music has been turned off for the night. And as you can see in the summaries where that's occurred, the officers also conducted routine door checks to the business to ensure that the building is properly locked when it is closed for the night. I have discussed a lot of ways where we have tried to proactively provide support and assistance to Mr. Bush and the headquarters staff. We have found that little has changed to improve these concerns. The pattern of over-serving, overly intoxicated individuals, individuals along with disturbances which have occurred in a rather short period of time have left me concerned as well as the rest of my staff. I am not here to go after Mr. Bush or his business in any way. This is simply a matter that needs action as I fear this could end with someone being seriously injured or killed. After reviewing all the material that we have covered, we have, I've reviewed everything and I am confident we have done everything we can to try to help. I feel we have exhausted every avenue that we can take. At this time, I'm asking for the assistance of the village board in finding a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, Mr. Bush, are you on the call? There you are.
I am.
All right, so if you'd like to make some comments, we'd be open to listening.
Okay. That was quite a lot to digest. I guess I will start with during the last, I mean, obviously I'm a resident here in town. I do a lot in Oregon and so Oregon is very important to me in terms of how well we how I, you know, our perception of it. I'm sorry, this is actually just a little bit more than I thought was gonna happen in this. In, prior to 2019, I had had many conversations with previous chief Ull about any issues. Whenever he had an issue, he called me or talked to me. If there was something that was specific, he would ask. So this has been a different thing going forward. I mean, so it's, I don't want to get into a he should, she said, I don't think that's valuable for your time on the board. I don't really think that's important, but I do feel that if there was some other communication, and I don't mean like, I mean, for example, in the 16 pages of the police report that you included in this, the employee that you stated said that they are not allowed to call the police? Well, that night, my employees called the police on her. She was the one who was causing the problem. She was also the one who had gotten off of her shift, left the establishment, went to her friend, the boyfriend's house with the car. This is the This is the same group, the same person that didn't know where her car was. It was the same event. Came back to headquarters, had one drink and got into an argument with another employee. Unfortunately, they couldn't stop her and she was acting very odd. And if you read that report, the officer also says that the officer says she was confused quite often about what was going on. She was angry. Um. That ended up causing. That is why we ended up causing my manager called the police that night. It wasn't that we were trying to avoid police conflict. We were trying to do that, so. The person who we called the police on is telling. The police that they're not supposed to. Be called. So I mean, and we've called the police numerous times. So this is not something that's common. Most of my managers have. Anyway, um, so. She left. I found out about that instance the next morning, and my response to that was I suspended all employees that were involved with it. I. Did not give them the ability to drink alcohol for at least a month in the building until we could talk about it. And then after I reviewed the footage. And actually talked to the other staff members about it, and I found out that she'd only had one drink after coming back. I assumed that there was some other. Drug or something in her system. Because it didn't make sense to me that she could go into that level of hysteria. We ended up terminating her because of that. While they had asked her to leave. Before they were able to get the doors locked, the uh. She kept leaving and coming back in. That is why the employee locked the door. That was completely wrong. She did not, they they should never have done it. Until I read your police report, I did not know that the door was locked. Because the police did not tell me that, even though I had an officer there the next morning and we were watching the video of the incident, I did not know that my employee locked the door. Um. I mean, again, I don't want to go through all these things. The uh, the gentleman on the patio with his father, they, that group arrived on a bachelor party. The bachelor party bus dropped them off. They walked in. Literally walked in a different gentleman bought a round of drinks. They sat them down. My bartender immediately noticed that one of the patrons was not. The guy on the ground was not doing well, took his drink away and said, he can't be here. And they said, we've already called his father. His dad will be here in like fifteen minutes to pick him up. At that point, we weren't sure if we should remove him or let him stay. So he was sitting in a chair. We let him stay. That's not something where I would be like, oh, we did the wrong thing. His father was on his way to pick him up. I mean. You gave an example of somebody who was found in the golf course with a bottle of whiskey, but the staff stated that they did not serve him. Um. There was one instance where we did not have camera footage. That is true. We were hit by lightning. And I did not know that my DVR had. No longer worked. We immediately fixed it and every other one of these incidents. If the police have ever asked us for video. We've offered it. You know, I would, how about this? It doesn't do me any good to go through all of these. Moments and go. Here, this is what happened in two thousand and seventeen. This is what happened in two thousand and eighteen. When I did talk to the officer. Um, when Officer Hatfield and I talked and he actually showed me some of the ones, this was not the way that. Chief Oul had done it. So I did not know that some of these events actually happened when they don't happen at headquarters, like when somebody at their house. Is found and they're saying, hey, I was here, I was at headquarters. Well, we don't know that there was that that happened because. The police don't come in and tell us, hey, we found somebody and we're putting your name on that. But we also don't know. What happened when they left? I mean, the incident where my bartender called the police. She kicked that gentleman out at eleven thirty at night. With his friends, he left. He arrived back at one thirty in the morning, two hours later. The doors were locked and he was staring at her. She called the police because she felt worried. Okay, well. The police came and they did a great job of securing the premises and they walked her to her car. Two hour or an hour and a half after that, he was arrested for a DUI. So four and a half hours after he left headquarters, he got a DUI. How? How would I be aware of that if nobody tells me? So and I don't mean like I should be informed of everything, but if our name is put into a police report that says last drink at headquarters. I mean, there's one in there where the person put down. Found. An intoxicated individual said he was not at a bar, but headquarters is that is in that direction. So it was probably headquarters. Those are the things where I'm like, I'm not sure how to respond to that because that isn't even evidence of us doing it, but I'm always, I I actually added more cameras. To protect the business when we would have issues. Please take my video. If one of my employees is over serving, I will fire them. I will absolutely fire them. I want to be compliant. When we've had issues in the past. And I've had, we have. If I know about it, I immediately take action. When we had that argument between our two staff members, we took action. So. You know what? I I guess I would leave this up to the board to ask me questions because some of you know me, some of you do not. Um. I also own a bar in Stoughton. The police officers from Oregon called Stoughton and asked them if we have any issues like that in Stoughton. I've owned the bar in Stone for thirteen years and they said they do not. They had very little issues. I'm the same owner at both places. If my staff is doing unreasonable things and I'm aware of it, I will immediately terminate them. I'm never, I have never said no to video footage. If we we had one instance where it wasn't about not saying yes to it, it was about we could not. Provide it. But the incident where the woman kicked the officer and attacked her. I gave the video footage, you know, to Chief Oul for the entire evening because that's what he asked for. So I I guess uh. I'll let you guys speak. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate that. All right. So I think now um, board members, we have comments, we have questions. Randy, you want to go first?
So so this is for the chief and for Jamie, two two questions. There, chief, you said there was a meeting in July, a two hour meeting. Uh, twenty twenty. I I I'm just wondering what was agreed upon at that meeting? Was there a plan? Developed. Going forward by both parties? And then my my last second question is the most important for both of you. How do you suggest we fix this? Obviously, we got a problem here. How do we, how do the two of you work together and work with us? How do we fix this?
Um. Would you like, who would you like to speak first, sir?
Pardon?
Who would you like to go?
I I don't care.
Oh, um, after I talked to Officer Hatfield on uh, the late July meeting that we had. Um, we had a lot of good ideas, honestly. Uh. That was a fantastic meeting. When I finished it, I actually said, because I was unaware of some of these because of. In the past, the way that the department ran, they did not come in and tell me this. And I said. Could I get? Could I be informed anytime headquarters is put in a police report? I know how to take, I know that I can actually ask for police reports. I didn't know by asking him that that was the expectation is that I was going to go find them. Uh, I wouldn't have known exactly what dates to look for, to know that something had happened not on our property. But that may have included us and that I should go look for that and then find the police report unless I was doing a daily police report search. I thought he was going to inform me. Maybe I misunderstood that, or maybe he was just saying, hey, this is the best way to do it. So. My, could be absolutely my fault. Maybe it was, maybe he was. So that was what we thought we had done. And I said, I would like to have consistent communication with you if you ever have an issue because they do walk through. Officers are walking through our establishment multiple times every week. And through all of these walkthroughs, none of these incidents are from that. I mean, if you look through this whole thing, it's not like we walked through and that patron was. Throwing up or that patron was doing anything. That would lead the police to actually have to act while they were in the building and they're coming in. She explained to you, they are now coming in week, multiple times per week. So and I have no problem with that. Absolutely great. Come in as much as you want. Moving forward, I mean, I will meet with you every week. I will show you video whenever you want. I mean, I have never been adverse to having conversations. When I thought that I was going to be contacted by Officer. Hatfield if our name showed up when our name hadn't shown up, I know we've had a couple of instances. I assume that that the officers knew what they needed to know. I didn't know that, you know. And again, my fault, I should probably have said, hey, I ended up suspending those people after that event at my bar. I ended up firing that one. I I have. Eliminated their privileges of drinking here because they obviously can't do it and. I'm suspending that person. So anyway. So I guess I'm looking for options. I have, I mean, this has been a very hard time. I mean, a lot of a couple of the problems that we've had in twenty twenty are wearing masks and people fighting over masks. That was the fight that started was over masks and then somebody threw a table because of a mask. People are more on edge. Because of the pandemic, it has not been an easy time, and I don't want to get into an argument. I don't want to, if. If she would like me to meet with her, I would happily do it. I have never met.
Let me ask, let me go to the chief, chief, chief. What do you, what do you think we need to do to fix this?
Yeah, so um, in Officer Hatfield's meeting with. Uh, Mr. Bush, um, he gave recommendations and that's what we've been doing all along. Um, trying to get the staff better educated on identifying when a person is too intoxicated. Um, creating policies. Um. And you know, at one point I I noted in um. Officer Hatfield's documentation of the conversation. He asked um, specifically asked about the incident that occurred on July twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, where the individual was passed out on the outdoor patio area. And um. Jamie state, Mr. Bush stated, he was aware of the incident as a manager's. Uh, keep a log of every time the police come into the building. So knowing that uh, we would, I mean, I I know I would assume that, okay, he does know when we're there. Um. But a lot of this, a lot of this documentation that you'll find in the packet on. Um, dated seven twenty seven of twenty. From Officer Hatfield, our recommendations, we even. Uh, offered to utilize our drug recognition, drug recognition expert, which a lot of communities don't have. Uh, Detective Sergeant Half, Detective Sergeant Jansen is DRE certified. So. To have that sort of training come in, it would not only help. Identify overly intoxicated people, but then also people that. Um, are under the influence of a drug such as cocaine or heroin or whatever, where alcohol just adds on to that and can cause some of these issues too. But yeah, we we made a lot of suggestions and recommendations to him.
So Chief and Jamie, do you think that it's possible that we could get the two of you? Or or whoever from the police sit down and come up with a plan? On paper. To figure out how to deal with these things. It sounds like there's been. Some miscommunication and just sit down and hash this out. Because it's, this isn't good for anybody. It's not good for the the the. Police Department is not good for the village. It's not good for the. The uh, for Jamie. I mean, I mean, does that sound like, could that be agreeable that you guys sit down and? Hash these things out and come up with a plan on a deal with this stuff? Get it in writing.
I would be all.
I'm just throwing it out.
I I would.
Are you open to that?
So. A lot of that's been occurring and we haven't had the results. To change it, to change.
I think it needs to happen again, chief.
I I agree, but then what what if? There's no follow through. That, because this has to change and. Soon, I I am seriously fearful. We're we're going to end up with something. Um. That is not good. Um, whether it's a serious injury or death. Um.
I think you guys got to try. I mean, try again. I mean, that's that's the only thing I can think of. I mean.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Randy.
Yes.
Persons that have comments, uh, go ahead, Jerry, and remember to unmute yourself.
Maybe, um, Jamie, first of all, I just want to let you know that as a board, we. Appreciate having your business in Oregon. And it's very unfortunate that we have to be going through this struggle right now. Um. First, I'm going to remind you that this is your business to run. Within the rules. And. The thing that struck me reading the reports is you don't have any of these problems over at Deeks in Stoughton. So the the only thing that's different in Oregon. Is the staff. So you have to do something with your staff in Oregon. And uh. You know. This is going down a road that's going to get ugly for everyone, especially you. Because where what we're headed is your liquor license will be in jeopardy. Um, you may be required to have security when you're open, which is way too expensive. And I I I think you can, I think you have to. Just be present more in Oregon. And manage Oregon. Uh, until things get better there.
I I agree that there is definitely, uh, I I am, just so. I go in every morning at six AM. I just don't, I'm not bartending anymore. My kids are all in high school, so I spend both of them. So I definitely can make that adjustment.
Hmm. Yeah, right. I mean, but I think. You have to be. Present until these problems are solved. Um. Finally, chief, um, what recommendation do you have? Going forward? For the board and for Jamie?
I, you know, I. We we have an excellent connection with our businesses in this community. And I I want to support and help. Mr. Bush through this um, and his staff. Um. But I don't want to. Play the same tune over and over again where law enforcement is sitting across from putting all these things on. In front of them and nothing is changing. I I think the members of our community deserve better than that. Um. I would certainly be happy to come up with some recommendations for him. But he's got to do something with those recommendations.
Hmm.
Um, and it's got to change. Um.
Yeah, I know, I noticed in the uh, reports that there was a training. That nobody from headquarters, including Jamie's. Uh, appeared for. They just, it just kind of.
Well, I put that out to my staff. I I guess I did not make it a mandatory thing. I put it and I actually had. Of them say will show up. And evidently they did not. Uh. I and again, when I talked to the officer about it, I I apologized profusely. I was like. I didn't know they weren't going to show up because and then he said, well, you could have made it mandatory. And I was like, I probably should have. I just had, I had. I had staff that said that they were interested in learning.
Yeah. Thanks, Jamie. Well. Chief, I'll leave it to uh, up to you. What do you, how do you want to proceed with this?
For me, I just, I need this to stop. I need the over serving to stop to where the point people are so incapacitated. Um. If. Mr. Bush wants to meet with me, I'd be more than happy to, but um, I think. There needs to be some. Uh, consideration for what's going to occur if that goes nowhere. Like the multiple other meetings with my members of my agency has gone. Um. I I get that um. Uh, a bar is a difficult. Establishment to run. Um. But I I would, I would love to see him there during, I mean, they, these are pretty set timeframes. On when these incidents are occurring, it would be great then to have him there so that he can. Uh, handle and run the establishment and my officers can be back out on the street. Keeping the community safe.
Are you suggesting that you want me to be there at bar time every night?
If if that's what stops it?
No, I'm just, I'm I'm asking because, well, I mean, this is. Five years or four and a half years worth of of incidents that in some of them. The incident didn't happen in my establishment and. We're looking at it and you're going, well, that person was there. I can absolutely, I mean, I can search, I mean, during COVID, we could just start shutting down. I mean, we don't even need to be open and I'd be happy to retrain. I would also be happy to start showing some of the data. And actually sitting down with you and being like, hey. This, because I had some of these conversations with your predecessor and. It's just a very different dynamic. And so that's fine. I can learn and adapt. But this is just a different, I was, this is not how we had communicated with the police in the past. My only first real. Conversation with you is here right now. And. I also had a very long conversation with Officer Hatfield, and I hope, I hope he liked, I hope he thought that what I was trying to do was reasonable. I I was. I wasn't trying to do anything at that point other than figure out a solution to this. And so when I actually got this, it was pretty shocking to me because I only, I only knew that my. I knew our our four events that we had had where we had called you were. A patron throwing a table at a bartender for asking them to wear a mask and and the late night thing. So I was like, okay, we we don't really have any, this isn't a matter of um. Like. An over intoxicated situation anymore that none of those had happened. It wasn't somebody being over served. So I I guess I was unaware of some of those and that's where I'm like, I will happily do whatever it takes to make sure that we have a thriving business in this community that still supports the tax base, that still brings people in, that still has. Old working.
Uh, Corey, go ahead.
Um, just sitting back, listening to this. What I hear is. We have a situation that is not safe. We have things that are happening. That. Exceed the severity and frequency of what we're seeing at other establishments in the village. This isn't. That's the issue that we need to get at. You know. As Jerry had mentioned, you know, this is your establishment. If I own an establishment like that and I hear that this is going on and I care about my community. I'm going to do what it takes to let my staff know what they need to do to prevent that from happening. Sure, some of these incidents, I'm sure were coincidental and and maybe didn't involve you, but I think when you look at the totality of all of these events and everything that's happened. You can plainly see that something needs to be done. From the board's perspective. From the board's perspective. You know, our. Strength and what we can do is something that you're going to not like at all, which is. Start looking at your liquor license. Ultimately, we don't want to get there, you know, we, we want things to change and I honestly do think that. It does mean that on occasion you need to be there at bar time. You may not catch every incident that happens, but you'll see how your staff is behaving, you'll see what's going on and you'll get ideas of things that need to change. So I, I guess with all of this, just take the message that this is very serious, you know. Our positions as village board members, you know, number one is keeping our public safe and you know, that's what we're here for, that's what we want. We want a thriving business community too, so we're not here to hit you over the head because we, we want to, we're, we're here to keep people safe primarily. So that's what we want to do and we want to work with you to make that happen. And I know our police department has a lot of resources to try and work with you and ideas to, to try and make this. A much better situation for everyone, so please work with our police department and, and make some changes. Quit looking at situations from the standpoint of, well, that wasn't our fault. Maybe it wasn't entirely your fault, but maybe there was a little thing that could have been done that may have changed some of these situations. You know, I, I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to, to keep our public safe, so thank you.
Thank you, Corey, yeah, I think that was, I think it was very well said. Other board members, comments at this time, questions for the chief or for Jamie? Uh, yes, Luke, and remember unmute yourself, there you go.
Hey, thank you, yeah, I just, I just have to say that I would agree with all the trustees' positions so far, I would just ask that. You know, when I think about my employees and I have to do reviews on them or if I have any type of performance improvement, I have to make sure I have a timeline in place. And so as we see this long history that we're reviewing here. Can we, when you work together with chief, can we just ensure that we're, we're not thinking, how are we going to look next year? But how are we going to look three months from now, six months from now? Because safety is really the issue here and, and we would hate to see, you know, an issue happen in the community. Where somebody does get hate because too much alcohol or alcohol and drug combination, you know, stemming from perhaps your establishment, so. I would just recommend to you guys, if, if you are able to work together, and I hope you are, that we can get a timeline established here so we can see some. Some improvements relatively quickly.
Thank you, thank you Luke. Any other, yes, go ahead Jenna.
Yeah, to, to echo a lot of what's already been said, I agree that I think we look at this as a community safety issue. And look at the totality of everything, but I would also encourage you, Mr. Bush, as you. If, as you meet with Chief Pagan cop to remember that. She's an entirely different person than our previous chief and. And coming at this with a different lens, especially as the creator of our liaison program and we. Like that, that's, you know, one of the reasons why she's here and so as you, as you have those meetings. Know that this is, this is a new situation or, and it's not a new situation, but it's, it's a new chief and come and do it with fresh eyes because. She has that perspective that she can bring to the table that you have maybe not experienced before, but I think the two of you can get it worked out.
Thank you Jenna. Any other board comments at this time? Amanda, go ahead.
Okay, last one here. So thanks for, for coming, Mr. Bush. I just kind of want to. Thank you for coming and say, you know, we're, we're not the enemy here, we're not here to embarrass or chastise so much, but. To help, we want our businesses to be successful. And in the past, you haven't come when we've wanted to talk about alcohol policy and stuff for the village. You know, we've extended invitations before and, and you know, one of them, you might have been out of town, I, I don't remember exactly. But I, I know that we've had alcohol discussions before and, and you weren't there. And so I'm glad to see you here tonight and I would like to see you in the future when we. Extend those types of information, opportunities to have that relationship. With us because. I think that dialogue is, is important and the same thing should be with the police department, you know. You and Chief Pagan cop should have a. A friendly relationship and be able to pick up the phone and ask questions and talk to the liaison if, you know, primarily probably. Should be your contact and not the chief, but maybe figure out a way where you can get information about police reports. Where you're mentioned and things like that, there has to be a way to. Work that out. Yeah, so, but. I appreciate you coming, I think it's, it's good, it's a good thing and I think we can get this back on track, but it's serious, so. Yeah. Corey said it better than I did, I think, but that's it.
Thank you Amanda, I guess I'm probably the last person to talk, I, I, I. I like what everyone said, Jamie, I want to thank you for being here, running a business during COVID. Really, really sucks and I can. I can understand that, I want to see you succeed, the entire town wants you to succeed, you know, when COVID gets done, you have a. You have a meeting room that we're going to need because there's going to be a lot of parties, so we need you to succeed, but we want you to succeed safely. I, I would encourage you to come up with a plan to try to figure out how to work with your staff. Because it sounds like it, it might primarily be a staff issue, I, I don't know, but to work with your staff. And the last thing I would say, it's not, it's, it's not our police chief's job to, to fix things. I would like to see the response come from you of what your plan is. And then, because really the last step we want to do is have the chief of police make a plan for you. Because I guarantee you, I, I can only imagine, you're not going to like that plan. So let's, let's have you work on your business and I don't think we can take any action on this tonight, we can put it on a future agenda, right Mike? But that would be my parting words to you Jamie, to see, to, to have you maybe consider some staff changes, consider some staff training. Whatever, whatever needs to happen.
I, I agree, I don't think it is the, the chief's job and I. Think a great point was made is I do need to look at this a little differently with a new chief, not because of. Anybody being wrong or right, it's just, I need to adjust to make sure that we're safe, it's all working, everybody's good. Maybe I'll just stop in and, and, and start hanging out with my liaison a lot more and not putting that pressure on her.
Okay, Mike, did you have recommendation or thoughts on how to move forward?
I, I think I'll wait for, for the chief and for Jamie to, you know, tell me that they, that they've worked. Whatever, and we, we'll come back, you know, I'll probably wait for the chief to tell me when to come back to the board, but we'll give you a status report, I think you deserve that after this. I'm not sure when that would be, but I'll, you know, maybe next couple of months, we'll, we'll put this back on the agenda and give you an update on it.
Okay.
This is Matt, can I, can I just weigh in briefly?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that is definitely going to happen during the first six months of next year. Because it's required by law is that the board is going to have to evaluate whether to renew the license. And so there's going to be a process that's going to unfold during the first half of twenty twenty one. That will absolutely bring this question back to the board again. The chief and, and your department is going to have to decide what, if anything, they should present to the board. In connection with the application for renewal of this license and then the board is going to have to vote on what to do. So it's inescapable that you're going to have to take a look at this license. In the first half of twenty twenty one, as you are with every other license in the village. But now you have a lot of background information that's been presented that inevitably will cause this to be one that you're going to. What, you're going to, you're going to be asking yourselves and your chief, you know, where do things stand now with this place?
Thank you Matt.
So Jamie, in response to your question, I mean, I actually was thinking of just, you know, like giving a date, say. You know, let's by January, the second board meeting in January, let's come back to the board with the status report and that way. Maybe that way it's not just hanging out there, I would, I would make a point of, you know, checking in with, with the chief. And say, is it ready to go back to the board on the eighteenth, maybe we should do that.
I think that's important because it, it sounds like our chief is. Probably rightly concerned about public safety and. I think Corey, Corey said it best that our, our chief job as elected officials is to keep our community safe, right? Our community expects us to pick up their garbage, to keep the water running when they turn on the faucet and to generally keep them safe. Everything else are the little things that we get yelled at for, but those are our main, our main jobs, right? So I, I, what do board members think about that, having this back at the second meeting in January? I, I'd like a status report, just to make sure that we're keeping things safe. Yeah, Corey.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of checking in to just hear what progress we can make, you know, if there are. You know, staff improvements or, you know, training or things like that, that, that Mr. Bush can bring to us, that certainly will. Help when it does come time to renew the liquor license, because I can tell you if, if we have continued incidents. And, you know, things happening and, and we don't have any signs of attempt at trying to make progress on this. It's going to be a very difficult decision when it comes time to renew the liquor licenses, so. I think regular check-ins, like Luke had mentioned, kind of set that, that timeline to make sure that things happen.
Thank you, yes Jenna.
I was thinking, because we, January is a great timeline for a check-in, but because we have the holidays and things. That will cause some delays in kind of turning this ship around, I'd also like to hear the plan. That, things that you've done, but also your plans moving forward, Corey mentioned regular check-ins, if that would help, I like that idea as well. So, yeah, keeping that conversation open between us and, and you, I think would be great.
All right, any, any parting words chief, any, anything that you want from us that you haven't heard or? No, this is, this is great and I, I really hope things work out well and we can move forward in a good direction. Okay, all right, so, so Jamie, know, know that the. Ultimately, we're on your side, we want you to succeed, please, please know that. The hardest decision we would ever have to make would be to do some sort of sanction, none of us want to do that. We want you to succeed, we want your business to be safe, so please help us do our jobs. And, and see if we can move forward, does that make sense?
Yes. But yes, absolutely, I mean, that's actually what, I mean, that's what I want, my kids grew up in this town, I don't want them, I mean, they're all driving now and they're sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. I don't, I don't need, I don't want to be a part of anything like that.
Understandable, right. Okay, all right, so I think, I think we are done right now with this agenda item, is that correct? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bush, for your time tonight, we appreciate you being here, thank you chief. I know that you've been, you and your staff have been doing a lot of work and we appreciate. We appreciate you coming to the board and asking for help when you feel like you need it. I think in the past, we haven't gotten that from police chiefs and it's not a sign of weakness, it's a sign of. Maybe somebody else can help me pick outside the box, so personally, I appreciate that chief. And if you, if there's cases that you want to do that more, I think that this board is open to. To helping you in whatever way that we can, I think I probably speak for everybody in that, so know that we can be a resource.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah. All right, we will keep on trucking here, item five, approval of minutes, there are none. Item six, approval of vouchers, we have vouchers tonight in the amount of. Nine hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and nine cents, could I get a motion to get this on the table, please? So a motion by Glush, second by Peterson, thank you, all right, what questions do we have for staff on tonight's vouchers? Any questions?
I have one Jamie.
Okay, yes, please go ahead.
It's, it's fourteen eighteen, it's CGC Incorporated, Janesville. Perry Geotech Analysis, it's probably a Jeff question.
Yeah, that's, that's the Janesville and South Perry Parkway intersection and we approved. Oh, a couple, about a month ago or so, we approved a contract with CGC, which is a geotechnical drilling company, they came in and drilled several holes. Down about fifteen feet and they do that for pavement analysis and any kind of structural analysis.
All right.
For future design.
Yep, thanks Jeff, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? All right, seeing none, Peggy would like to do a roll call vote, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Randy Glush?
Yes.
Bitch?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Thank you. Item seven, proclamations and announcements, do we have board comments tonight? Jeff, you're up next, update regarding leaf collection.
This has been the world's best fall. And truly, we've had some of the best weather and it's allowed our staff to really not only catch up on. I, I mean, I see the truck, we've, we send the truck out about every Monday just to go through the village and make sure there hasn't been anyone that's pulled out some leaves over the weekend. But to be honest with you, we are, we should be done with leaves completely and this is probably the most complete we've ever been with it going into winter, which is. Just great, the guys have done just an outstanding job and I think we are hauling some away from the leaf pile today. Down to our, our compost site that we use or that farmer uses south of Oregon, so. Things have gone really, really well this year.
Excellent, that's good to hear. All right, staff comments, we have a list here of upcoming virtual meetings, doesn't look like we're meeting. Oh, media, I'm sorry, on December twenty first. Yep, and then in January, we have a couple special means, January eleventh, you know, it's a joint meeting of the library board. And that is on, that's on a Monday, right?
It's a Monday, yep.
And then make sure this means on your calendar on Thursday, January fourteenth. We're having a joint meeting of the planning commission for Vandewell's presentation on the West Side Parks conceptual plan. And that is really helpful if board members can be at that, because then we don't have to have Vandewell come back and present that at the village. Board level and the reason that's important is because Vandewell is expensive. We can have Vandewell present once, that would be, that would be cool. I'm just like being honest, so yeah, make sure that one's on your, on your calendar and then January eighteenth board meeting. Any other staff means, Peggy, do you have something?
So I do just have one thing, I just wanted to let you know that I received an email from Dane County. That Dane County and Milwaukee County received an order this past Friday that there's been an appeal filed. By President Trump to request a review of the determination of the recount. Of the presidential election. It's ordered that both counties, municipal clerks, boards charged with the election material and the Wisconsin Election Commission. Impound and secure all ballots, papers and records associated with the recount. And the presidential election, so just thought you should know that. And we had, we do have all of that information stored and locked up, so.
Good, thank you. Any other staff comments? All right, marching on to item eight, communication and miscellaneous business. First one is discussion on possible action regarding resolution number twenty dash three seven. Adapting the twenty twenty-one salary schedule effective twelve twenty-seven twenty twenty for non-represented employees. We have a recommended motion to adopt this resolution, would someone like to make that motion to get this started?
Stitch a move.
All right, so a motion by Stitch, second by Peterson, thank you very much. Looks like Elise is getting this up on the, yep, there we go on the screen, do we have questions about this? Then I would ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item B, this is discussion and possible action regarding ordinance number twenty dash fourteen. This is an ordinance suspending from January first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, section three point one zero of the village code of ordinances relating to the imposition of room taxes. So if the board recalls, this is, um, coming from a previous meeting where, uh, the hotel came forward letting us know that they were obviously doing, due to COVID, um, we're going to be having problems, um, paying room taxes. So one of our solutions was to just not collect room taxes for the first six months of twenty-one. Therefore, they would not have to pay room taxes for the first six months through twenty-one. So, um, so what we have before us tonight is an ordinance to, to do that. Um, and like earlier, we're going to, by two-thirds vote, we can suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings. So I would make that motion that we do that tonight. Is there a second? Second by Glash, thank you. Any discussion on that first motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
And just a, just a clarification on, on, say, I did this with Matt when he was preparing the orange. So it isn't just for the hotel. Any business in the village that collects room tax, we can't, we can't separate that out. So this, this, I want to make sure the board knew that.
Correct. Yeah. And I mean, I think that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. So then, then this is, um, I would, uh, bring, actually, I'll just, I'll ask for someone who would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen. Would someone like to make that motion? Uh, motion by Jacobson, second by Peterson. All right. Is there further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. So Mike, you'll, you'll let, um, uh, Adam at the hotel and Paul, no, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. All right. Item C, uh, this is discussion and possible action regarding setting interest rates for advances at zero point two-five percent for twenty twenty. We have a recommended motion to set the interest rate for advances at point two-five percent for twenty twenty. The current local government investment pool rate is point one-three and the state bank of Cross Plains is point two-three percent. Uh, someone like to make this motion, then we'll have Mike, it'll be Mike or Lisa explain it. Uh, motion by Peterson, second by Jacobson. Thank you. Uh, Mike or Lisa, do you just want to give us the highlight of this?
You should do it, please.
Sure. Um, this is what we do every year and this is the advances that have been made from the general fund to one of our special funds. Um, so the interest rates have obviously banked out this year. Um, so that's why the recommendation is only for a quarter of a percent on the advances. And I think we're down to just one advance. The other ones, the, um, the DNR grant for the Florida Avenue homes, we wrote that off this year. So there won't be a payment or a charge for the interest on that one. So we're just down to, I, I believe it's one advance that we have right now.
Do you remember?
We have to write that off?
Oh. Okay.
Uh, that's what you wanted, Jerry. So we did it.
Yeah.
I'm just joking. Thank you.
Lisa, do you remember how much the advances for that we have left?
Um.
Like ballpark? Is it like ten thousand, a hundred thousand?
Um, I, I want to say it's around eighty or ninety thousand. It has to do with Tiff District number four in the creation and
Okay.
Associated with that district.
I think, I think you're right, Lisa. I think it's about that. Yep.
All right. Any questions on this? All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is a review of the twenty twenty estimated tax bill. Who is excited to get their tax bill in the mail?
Nobody ever is.
Right. Yes. All right. Any thoughts and comments on this from staff?
You say you want to be, I, I think this is just taking the average house, right, Lisa?
Uh, yeah, the, the comparison is the average between the average home of two thousand nineteen versus two thousand twenty. So if your, um, assessed value didn't increase, then you won't see, um, that kind of an increase on your taxes, so.
Well, for village purposes, your taxes would probably go, would go down because our tax rate's going down.
Right. I think the only tax rate that went up was, um, the school district tax rate went up. The county ATC and the village all went down and the Tiff District went up, but that's kind of misleading because that's because there's been more value added. It's not really because we're taxing more. There's just been more value added in the Tiff Districts.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, I feel like, I feel like that's good news for residents. I feel like they're getting good, good value out of their money these days. So, good job, village board. I'll pat, I'll pat us on the back. Uh, item E, discussion and possible action regarding donation to the Oregon Historical Society. We were recommended motion to, to approve declaring former Oregon Police Department badges as surplus and allowing them to be donated to the Oregon Historical Society. Someone like to make this motion? All right. Motion by Glash, second by Jacobson. Um, any comments on this one? This seems like a no-brainer. Yes, Jenna.
Pretty cool idea. So, kind of, that's a, that was neat.
Yeah. All right. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. So the, you go to the program society. Uh, item F, we have a discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-one Employee Assistance Program Agreement. We have a recommended motion to, um, approve this agreement with Family Service Medicine in the amount of twenty-two hundred dollars. Funding is in the twenty twenty-one budget and we would note that this is the same amount that we have spent for the past four years. Um, would someone like to make this motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Horton, second by Jacobson. Um, any questions on this? This is, I think, an even more valuable program this past year with COVID. People have got to be stressed out.
Yep.
So it's nice for them to have a resource that they can turn to.
And, and Greg Chisholm, who runs the program, is very, um, very flexible on who is a, a family member, I will say, over the years.
Good. All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item G, we have discussion and possible action regarding request to execute Dane County twenty twenty-one purchase of service agreement. Would someone like to make this motion, please? Motion by Peterson. All right. Second by Glash. All right. Any, do you want to explain this?
So this is the, um,
Oh, hi, Rachel.
Hello. This is the purchase of service agreement that, um, gets brought before you every fall. Dane County, um, passes grant funding to the senior center um, through the village to support various programs that we offer to the community. And I've broken it down for you. The total amount of the grant is just under a hundred thousand dollars. Um, case management and nutrition are both dollars that are pretty much guaranteed to us. The My Meal My Way program funding is a pass-through that goes through village accounts, but, um, reimburses Ziggy's for meals that they serve. The Adult Day Program and Medical Assistance Case Management funding are both amounts that, um, we have to earn. We never know for sure if we're going to earn all of those amounts or if we're going to earn perhaps in excess of those amounts. Depends on whether we have seniors who qualify, um, for those programs. So, um, as has always been the case, it seems, in my tenure here, at least, the county remains committed to supporting the seniors in Dane County and we really appreciate their support of these programs. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Yes, Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah. So I don't have a, a question. I just have a, a kudos. There's a crazy amount of regulations and things that hoops to jump through, uh, that you managed to do with, uh, Grace. So I, I really appreciate, uh, everything you do at the senior center and, you know, looking at these as a reminder of, of what you do. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, very much so. Thank you for all your work on that, Rachel. All right. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Rachel. All right. Item H, discussion and possible action regarding Stafford Rosenbaum twenty twenty-one rates. We have recommended motion to approve those rates. Someone like to make that motion, please? Motion by Jacobson. We have a second.
Personal second.
All right. Second by Peterson. Thank you. All right. So we have the rates here. Da-da-da.
No rate increase.
No rate increase. Here's our chance to grill Matt. Anyone? Anyone? Did Matt? Oh, there he is. I'm like, Matt just disappeared. Oh, there. Uh, okay. It doesn't look like we have any, any grilling for you, Matt. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, we have a discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty audit engagement letter. Um, we have a recommended motion to approve that letter with Johnson Block and Company, Inc. Would someone like to make that motion?
Well, I'll go make that motion.
Thank you. Motion by Bollig and a second by Stitch. Questions on this one?
Uh, Bollig is a question.
Sure. Go ahead.
Lisa, uh, are, what are the changes in that engagement letter?
Um, the only cha-changes, obviously, are the dollar amount that we will be paying for their services and this was all part of the budget that was approved back on November sixteenth. These are the same dollar amounts that were approved.
Okay. You answered my second question. Thank you.
Good.
I didn't even have to ask it.
All right. Further questions on this one? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item J, we have a discussion and possible action regarding the southeast area sewer study task order. We have a recommended motion to approve the task order at Town and Country Engineering in the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars for a sewer system analysis of the southeast area of the village with shared funding from Lake Stone Properties and Hofer Development. Now, normally I do not get excited about sewer, but we have been like talking about this on the board for a long time and oh my God, are we actually going to study this? This is exciting. But you know what? I'm going to make this motion. Would someone like to second it? Second by Jacobson. Okay.
We've been tiny. Well, yes.
Yeah.
This, this is primarily making sure that, um, you know, we, we have developed, we have significant development coming from both the Lake Stone, uh, I call it Lake Stone. They, they definitely set up things with different names at times, but the Lake Stone developers, um, that are doing that, uh, uh, Wida project at Wolf and Janesville and then, uh, Hofer Properties, who has been doing Autumn Ridge and they're looking at phase two and phase three and have come before on commission with some conceptual stuff and everything. When, when phase one went in, um, we recognized the fact that we had capacity in the system or we were confident in the capacity of the system to take phase one. Um, but we would require them to contribute towards a study of the area, just to be able to understand the capacity of the system, where we're at with capacity um, in the sewer system in that area and whether or not there are any uh, weak links, if you will, maybe some areas that might be bottlenecks or areas that would require some sort of uh, upgrade to be able to handle future peak flows from these developments. Um, and so this is at this time, you know, it's time to do this now as, as they enter into phase two and phase three of, of, uh, Autumn Ridge. And then with this, uh, whatever, I think, is it about a hundred and fifty-seven, something like that, units proposed out at the, uh, for the Lake Stone, um, development. And then other, other stuff, obviously, happening in the area with commercial development and everything. So, um, it's a good time. And, uh, so basically what we've done is requested this task order. Um, they'll study the system. They'll study peak flows. They'll, they'll look at the capacity of the system and then give us a, a basically a report of whether or not um, we're fine or whether or not we going into these developments, we need to be talking to these developers about improvements that might need to be made and that they would be development costs. So, um, what we're proposing is that this, this is a, I think the initial study is fourteen thousand five hundred. And then depending on how these studies go, sometimes when you are in the middle of this, you want to do some further analysis, maybe some model calibration, maybe some actual flow monitoring and everything. Um, and there's some additional services, so that the peak amount that they anticipate not to exceed would be twenty-one thousand dollars. We've proposed to split this with one-third, uh, from Lake Stone, one-third from Hofer Development. And then the remaining one-third from the village, uh, primarily because there's, there's other projects going on in the area and there's also, uh, this is part of our system. So we just felt that was fair.
Good work, Jeff. Splitting up that cost. That's really, that's great.
Thank you.
Questions from folks on this? All right. We have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
You know, all those years where my mom said, get your mind out of the sewer. This is where it finally starts to pay off.
Kind of wonder how long has Jeff waited to, to use that one? Do you have a list of these for every meeting?
No, that, that
Is it like bingo and then you drop them off?
That just came to me. I'm like, oh yeah, that would be kind of funny.
Nice.
We needed it. It's been a long night. It's, we're going on, uh, two hours and forty-five minutes.
Yes. We are cruising along though. I have faith. All right. Here we go. Item K. Uh, discussion and possible action. This is, um, regarding Highlands of Netherwood Phase One A. Ooh, we get to accept some streets and we get to reduce our letter of credit. So we have recommended motion to accept the street improvements, the storm sewer on site, the sidewalks, the curb, the gutter improvements as part of Highlands of Netherwood Phase One A and also allow the reduction of the letter of credit to ten thousand dollars. Would someone like to make this motion, please? Motion by Glash, second by Peterson. All right. Anyone have questions on this? Things are marching forward. This is always good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. And then similarly, we have a discussion and possible action with the Highlands of Netherwood Park fixtures. We have a recommended motion to authorize the Director of Public Works to procure approximately eight thousand dollars of equipment, including picnic tables, benches, a bike rack, a park grill and other appurtenances for Highlands of Netherwood Park. This is the park that we all, we were at the grant, the ribbon cutting for, correct, Jeff?
Correct. Correct. Yes.
It looks great. And so now, you, these are the last sort of finishing touches, correct?
Was that a second? Was there a second on that?
I'll make that motion. Is there, second by Jacobson. All right. Yes, go ahead.
This is the finishing touches and I want to think, I just want to make note of that we're kind of doing a little bit of change and, and I'm trying something new out here is a lot of our picnic tables are the wood picnic tables and we spend a lot of time every year trying to, uh, uh, refinish them, run them through planers, re-stain them and that type of thing. Um, I'm going with more of a, it's called a plastic wood type of thing. I think Cory, you guys, you've probably used this stuff before. Good luck. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, good. That's what I thought. Basically, it's a recycled plastic. It's a reused material. They're very heavy. They're very sturdy. And, um, so using those out there, they, the, the color is through and through these things. So it's not something very low maintenance. Um, we hope that people will treat them well. Um, I'll be honest with you. We've had a little vandalism already at, at our, the new park. And so it's been frustrating. I'm asking people to keep their, keep their eyes and ears open out there and if they see problems to report them to the police or to us, but, uh, that's beside the point. But, so we're looking at these tables are neat. They're hexagon type tables, which are really kind of cool. Um, each location will have ADA accessible tables, so wheelchair accessible, um, tables at each location. And then, um, some really nice benches around the play area. And then our first actual park grill in the village, which I'm kind of excited about. Just a spot where people can go out and, uh, and grill and it's an ADA X, it's ADA friendly grill that allows the grill grate to be rotated out of the way and so be able to use and then put back over the flame and stuff like that. So it's kind of some, some exciting stuff and we'll set up a, a concrete, um, piece of concrete pipe out there, set vertically in the ground. That'll be an ash receptacle location. And I've also talked to the fire chief about it. He's, he's fine with the location and, and use of that. So, kind of excited about it out there. They'll look, finish it off.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any questions about this? All right, any questions about this? Uh, Jenna, do you have a question?
Question or comments? I wanted to um, say good job on sliding in appurtenances. That was, I noticed that, that was good. Um, but also I feel uh, for this park, it seems like the majority of the features are um, ADA compliant in this park. Is that a fair assessment? And I really like that and I hope um, as we, I just want to thank you for keeping that eye on things that lends as we build the park and I hope we can have more parks like that.
Absolutely. We. We're looking at things that are much more single level, inclusive play, um, inclusive use. And if you have noticed, you go out there, everything's ramped or all, all on a single level and and of course, the, the solid surfacing is very, very inclusive, friendly, um, both for people in. Um, uh, wheelchairs or in other mobility devices.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, you guys, you guys fund it and approve it. So that's, that's very, very appreciated.
Thank you. Randy, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, or Jeff, I just want to say the, the bench at the pump house is made out of recycled plastic. And held up very well.
Good, good.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item M is a COVID-19 update. Um, this is um, regarding the 2020 tax collection. Uh, the gist of this is please do not go to Village Hall and try to pay your taxes in person. Let's not do that this year, right, Mike? Instead, let's drop them off in the secure Dropbox or mail it or pay via ACH or a credit card. Um, and if you, um, there are actually in-person collection dates and hours on December 30th and January 29th. If you absolutely have to do it in person, but um, village residents, please um, look at all these options on our agenda and find one that works for you. But also please pay your taxes. We'd really appreciate that.
And and just so you know too, um, the tax insert that comes with your bill every year um, has instructions, all these instructions listed on there too. So. Um, we're getting it out there so that it's in more than one place so that everybody knows how to pay their taxes safely.
Good, very good. Can't wait. Always my favorite piece of mail. All right, item nine. We are marching on, folks. There's, there's an end in sight. I will say that we will take a break before we go into closed session, in case anyone's wondering. Okay, reporter committees. Oh, goodie, this is me, Plan Commission. More stuff from the November 12th meeting. We did a lot of stuff at this meeting. Um, this is fun. So um, this is a discussion and possible action regarding the approval of a general development plan submitted by Netherwood Brewing for operating a mixed-use business operation at 900 Market Street. So um, one of the things that we were hoping would happen with Market Street is beginning to happen. We're having a little bit of redevelopment and excitement down there. Um, the Plan Commission voted to approve, prove this. It was um, it carried seven zero. Um, I think it's in the packet. If you have questions. Um, and so we will do this as we have a couple of times before in the meeting. Um, first thing we're going to do is we're going to vote, fund the rules and waive the first and second readings of this um, ordinance to change the zoning classification of the property to general industrial. Planning Development District. Um, that allows a little more flexibility for this company to do the things they want. I will give them quite a bit of credit. They have been for the Planning Commission numerous times. The Planning Commission has put them through numerous steps. And these guys have come back every time, making every change the Playing Commission has asked. Um, so I've been very impressed by that. That's good to see. Um, so I would ask that um, I I'll make a motion that will suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting for this ordinance. Is there a second? Second by Glash. All right, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, and now we can discuss it if you want. So then I'll make a motion that we consider adopting ordinance 20 dash 12. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, second by uh, Corey. All right, so there's information in the packet here. Again, remember, this is the general development. No, this is not the GDP. All we're doing is changing the zoning, correct? Right, Mike?
Yep.
Mike? So at the very beginning of the process, this is going to come before us and the Plan Commission at least once more, probably twice. Um, and hopefully in the end we'll have a little microbrewery. Wouldn't that be cool for Oregon? I don't really like beer, but I think it'd be cool.
Yeah, just want to clarify that I believe this is the GDP sort of serves as the rezoning step. So.
Oh, is it? Okay, cool.
One in the same, changing the zoning classification and adopting a GDP, which is the flexibilities from the base zoning district that they've requested.
All right, thank you, Elise. All right, any questions on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, so that'll keep marching down the bureaucratic. Uh, walkway to hopefully fruition. Uh, item two is discussion and possible action regarding approving the amended general development plan, GDP submitted by Patriot Properties and D-Sum Properties. For 101 Elliott Lane 214 Wolf Street. Um. So this has come before the Plan Commission a couple of times. You'll see that this time they're recommending a split vote, five yes, two no. What this is doing is essentially um, giving the owners of these two apartment buildings um, that are over by headquarters. To um, formally change the first floor um, from um, commercial to residential. Is that right? Am I saying that correctly?
The, the remaining units.
The remaining units.
Yeah, I believe it was four units that were still commercial.
Yep.
Yeah. They've actually asked for this at least once, maybe twice in the last uh, several years because they have problems renting those units out. And and as you may have gleaned, our planning commission um, is pretty adamant about. Trying to keep commercial, commercial. So that's why this comes before you on a, on a, a split vote because we still had two members that were like, nope. Needs to be commercial forever. They had to find people to rent it out to. And the rest of us were like, how long has that building been there? Like 15 years?
Yep.
We're like, they, you know, they give it the old, the old try for 15 years. Let's let them rent it out as apartments. So that's, that's what this is about. So we get to do the whole waving thing again. So here we go. Um, so I'll make a motion by two thirds vote to the board that we suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings of ordinance number 2013 at tonight's meeting. Is there a second? Second by Jacobson. Thank you. Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, and then um, I will make a motion that we adopt 2013. And this is adopting the general development plan for the property located at 101 Elliott Lane and 214 Wolf Street and a planned development district. Any, any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Do we get a second for your motion on that?
Oh, did anyone second my motion? I think.
Randy, I missed that, sorry.
May not have asked. All right, all right, cool.
There you go. Thank you.
All righty, and then um, one more thing with this property. Um. Oh, we get to actually approve the SIP. Um, so um, this is um, the Planning Commission voted the same way, five to. Um, the SIP um, shows how they're actually going to make solves and specifics on doing it. Um, so I would um, bring this motion forward from the Plan Commission that we adopt Resolution 239, which is adopting the specific implementation plan. For um, the Patriot Properties, um, D-Sum Properties, Foxborough Commons at the address um, read earlier. Is there a second for that motion? All right, motion or second by Glash. Any questions on this? Yes, Amanda?
Yeah, so I have, I don't want to open a can of worms here, but I wasn't at the Planning Commission meeting and I'm curious what type of objections that um. Meyer and Mar had.
Oh, what I said before, they, they think that they should remain commercial and the, the.
Oh, that's.
Of that building should keep looking for tenants.
I got you. I got you. Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, no, it's okay. There, I mean, there, there, there's even testimony from previous tenants who had rented for short amounts of time. It says that the visibility was poor for their business, so they moved elsewhere. Um, so these, these guys had all their ducks in a row. They, they really had, they, they brought all the evidence. So I mean, I voted for it. All right, so we have a motion as second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, so then we have no minutes requiring. Not recurring action. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We have some future agenda items coming up. Um, we still, we're still need to go into closed session, right, Mike?
Just, just for the one item for the property, we, we, so we should just read the beginning, but not, not anything to do with headquarters. We don't need that tonight, Gene.
Right. So you, do you want to, should we take a break? How long is this item going to take, Mike?
Um, I'd say maybe. Half an hour or so. If you, if you want to maybe. Uh, take, get a motion, go into closed session, then we'll, then we'll let people leave. We're not supposed to be part of a closed session and we can come back then.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, so I'll read what I'm supposed to read here.
Yep.
So the board may meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, correct, one, righty? To consider its bargaining position in connection with the possible acquisition of a parcel of land located on the west side of the village. And that's all we're going to do. And then we will adjourn from closed session. So someone like to make that motion to go into closed session. Motion by Jacobson, second by Glash. Uh, do we have to have a roll call?
Yep.
Yes. A roll call to go into a session.
Yep.
Randy Glash.
Sorry. Yes.
Carpenter.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Bollig.
Yes.
Jacobson. Horton.
Yes.
And Stitch.
Yes.
All right, we will go into closed session. We will adjourn from there. Um, yeah, so everybody who's not on the board meeting, thank you very much for being here tonight. We will let you go. Um, and then board members, let's take a break and how about we, we, you come back at 8:06. That's how good? All right, see you in five minutes.